Welcome, everyone, to the July 17th meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals here in Chatham, Massachusetts pursuant to Governor Healey's Massachusetts, March 28, 2025, signing of Chapter 2 of the Acts 2025 extending certain COVID measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law until June 30, 2027. This meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder, persons who'd like to listen to the meeting while in progress may do so by calling 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 402-819-489, or join the meeting via the link on Microsoft Teams posted on the agenda. This is a live broadcast and simulcast, however, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post the record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue or hearing or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. I will give you the procedural steps that we will have today, but before I do that, I would ask that everybody shut off any gadget that makes any noise whatsoever, please. And if you have conversations that are going to be more than one to two sentences, please take them in the hall. First, we take a roll call vote of all board members. We ask if anybody participating online would just be sure to let us know who you are, make that evident. We will have the hearing notice read by staff, Sarah Clark on my right, and in this case, Penrose is the applicant, and they will give the first opening statements. And then I will summarize all letters received by the board. Then there will be comments for up to three minutes, and that will be in the category of far or against or questions. Everybody will have three minutes, and then the applicant will have a chance to rebut anything that they heard or that I stated in the letters. We will then continue the application to a date certain, and all votes are taken by roll call. And at the end of the meeting, we will close via verbal confirmation and note the time of adjournment. Okay, so, the applicant. Oh, actually, roll call vote. I am sorry. Yeah, all right. Just making sure everybody's awake. All right, so, let's have a roll call vote, starting with Virginia Fenwick.
Virginia Fenwick, I approve.
Stephen D. DeBourne, I approve.
Lee Hovey, I approve.
Paul C. Simple, I approve this form of meeting.
Ed Acton, I approve.
David H. Veach, I approve.
And Randy Pottash, I also approve this form of meeting. Okay, Sarah.
Application number 25-034, Penrose LLC, 15 Milk Street, 16th floor, Boston, Mass. 02109. The property is owned by the Town of Chatham, located at 0 and 1533 Main Street, also shown on the Town of Chatham assessor's map, 9D Block 4A Lot 1, and map 9D Block 4 Lot 18. The applicants are requesting the grant of a comprehensive permit under Mass General Law Chapter 40B, Sections 20 through 23, and 760 CMR 56 for the construction of 48 dwelling units in nine structures, also proposed as the construction of a management building. The applicants are requesting the grant of various waivers from regulations promulgated by the Chatham zoning bylaw, the Chatham Water and Sewer Department, and other local regulations. The property contains 128,492 square feet, 2.95 acres, and an R20 zoning district. This was continued from May 8th and June 5th, 2025.
Welcome, Penrose and Attorney Singer.
Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Andrew Singer, attorney in Dennisport, here on behalf of the applicant. With us today from Penrose, standing next to me is Rio Saketti. We also have Carmen Chung and Charlie Adams. For other consultants who will be speaking with you today, we have Paul Adaman from Union Studios, Joe Henderson from Horsey Witten, and Mark Warfel from Crowley-Carterell. We had submitted a revised or supplemental submission to you last week, and wanted to start out, have a series of presentations today, and I just wanted to start out by, you know, acknowledging and appreciating that this is a complex project with many competing and passionate interests. After our presentations today, the correspondence, public testimony, your initial comments and questions, as the chair noted in the order, we hope to and desire to engage in a dialogue with you this afternoon and as a way to move the process, the review process forward before we then know will ultimately be continued, to allow peer review to continue. Today, we will review that supplemental submission that I mentioned to you. It includes a review of the numerous changes that the project has undergone since the initial filing of the RFP. And there have been several more changes that are made in the plans today. We just have this landscape plan up while I'm speaking, and then the team will be going through various plans. This is just to help orient you as I'm speaking. I'll be speaking a little bit more generally as to the 40B and some of the more overall history and process. We know that even with all the changes that have been made, they're not going to satisfy all parties, but they are, have been, and continue to be substantively responsive to the comments, questions, and issues that have been raised, while still enabling the project that was selected by the town to remain consistent with the RFP award, to be workable for the applicant, who's also the operator and manager of the site, and to create a safe, desirable, and livable environment for the residents and the community on the property. I know there are numerous additional new letters of public support in the file that are going to be read today. There is also a letter from the Fire Department supporting the design as submitted, which is what you're seeing up on the screen right now. The responses that we had in the supplemental submission, and they're going to govern how we present to you today, were broken down and grouped into the categories of project history, program, and design, which I'm going to talk about. Penrose is going to speak briefly, and then we're going to get into architecture, civil site design, transportation, and finally landscaping. The legal standard that you look at in a conference of permit application is whether the development is consistent with local needs. This requires a balancing test and a series of compromises among several worthwhile and often competing local rules, regulations, policies, and desires. That need for balance in this case, I think through the first two sessions we've had with you, is particularly demonstrated. Do you have letters and you've heard testimony in support, opposed, and with questions? And in these letters, in some of the testimony, there are several instances where certain suggestions and comments in one letter or comment directly compete and contradict another. It just shows that everything can't be achieved. It's the whole point of 40B. There has to be a balance, and for good or bad, that is the burden that you have, is to do that balancing of the testimony that you hear. And so that's what we're here presenting to you on. This is very typical of these types of developments. It's why you are tasked and consider matters of not just zoning, but you have everything. You're looking at zoning, environment, health, safety, site design, open space, landscaping, historic and planning. You're everybody, and those are all the considerations that you have to take into consideration as you're looking at the project, as you're looking at the waivers that are requested, and, you know, the overall development. In connection with what everyone acknowledges as an urgent housing need in Chatham and crisis here, the goal of both your review and the proposal is to provide affordable and attainable housing in accordance with state law and Chatham Housing Guidance. I'd like to just talk a little bit about the project history and the program design. The town issued the RFP for this project, for development of housing on this site, back in February of 2024. There were three responses from reputable developers with deep experience in creating housing that were submitted to the town. After an extensive review process, the town, the Select Board awarded the contract a year ago, July, to Penrose. Since that time, Penrose has expended extensive time, effort, and money in designing and engineering a suitable development, consistent with the overall design proposal accepted by the Select Board. The applicant has also reached out to and met with the Chatham Planning Board, the Affordable Housing Trust, Community Housing Partnership, historic committees, public safety departments, and other groups in town. All three of the proposals that were originally submitted to the Select Board in response to the RFP, they all included a consistent design layout with a circular drive and buildings arranged around the outside and/or inside of the loop driveway. Now, the proposals differed in numbers, styles, and heights of the buildings. Some of them were larger, some of them were smaller. However, they all provided affordable and attainable housing on this land with its frontage on Route 28 in a generally consistent layout that you see here. The demand for this housing is such that something unique happened in this proposal. The other applicants, the other parties that had submitted proposals for the RFP who were not selected, Penrose was selected, but those entities got together, and they've submitted a letter in your file. So you have a letter from Housing Assistance, Preservation of Affordable Housing, and Community Development Partnership, and they jointly are providing their support for this proposal. And they wrote in part that, quote, "In Chatham, the need for housing for our workforce is particularly acute. The availability of this land and the town's willingness to support this project provides a special opportunity to make a meaningful difference. This parcel is particularly well-suited for multifamily housing, as it is adjacent to public transport and within walking distance of the many small businesses along Route 28." In addition, the Chatham Housing Partnership submitted a memorandum of support to you, noting, quote, "Members of the CCHP are supportive of the density as it addresses the overwhelming need for housing in Chatham and provides much-needed rental housing in support of our workforce. The density and type of housing proposed also reflect the goals of the recently approved housing production plan. Members also are supportive of the overall architectural style, which we feel is consistent with Chatham character. Following our discussion of the proposed project, the CCHP voted unanimously with all members present to support the project." In addition, the Cape Cod Commission, as you've heard before, is a local board for purposes of Chapter 40B. That's their designation, and they issue, they review projects like a planning board would in the housing partnership, and they issued a letter as well to you. And in part, the commission wrote, "The regional policy plan community design goal seeks to promote context-sensitive design that uses traditional Cape Cod materials and forms while minimizing development footprints and adverse impacts to scenic resources. The proposed Penrose design of the 48-unit development is sensitive to the form and scale of Main Street and West Chatham, consistent with the community design goal of the RPP. The project provides a context-sensitive design for the property, mimicking both the scale and setback of existing buildings in the vicinity along Main Street. The project is sensitive to local context and designed to protect and enhance natural and community resources. Importantly, the project addresses the urgent and growing need for affordable housing in both the Town of Chatham and the broader Cape Cod region," end quote. The commission letter also actually had a suggestion, I think we referenced it last month, where they asked if the parking could be pulled back behind the front facades of the building, and that has been done. And when we go through, when the consultants go through all the technical changes on the plans, you will see that that has been done. One thing we would like to address, and I'm going to address it now, and Joe Henderson's going to, from Horsey Witten, will address it a little bit in more detail later, is that there has been an incredible amount of reference in both testimony and the letters that have come into you, referencing an alternative design proposal that was prepared and submitted by a neighbor to the property. This alternative proposal was presented informally to several boards and commissions in town subsequent to the prior reviews they held with the applicant on the applicant's proposal. After these meetings with the neighbor on this alternative design, meetings to which the applicant was not notified of or invited, so didn't know it was happening, some of the boards and commissions thereafter recommended and referenced that this sketch plan in varying degrees, and you see it coming up repeatedly in the letters that you see, particularly from Mr. Levitt. This alternative conceptual sketch proposal that these other boards reviewed was not to scale and had not been prepared by a professional engineer. Now, last week, Mr. Levitt did submit a plan, it was said to be engineered version of his plan. However, like its unscaled counterpart, this plan is not viable for several technical reasons. And as I mentioned, Mr. Henderson will discuss those in more detail, but some of the specific ones are that it directly does not comply with the Fire Department requirements for the Town of Chatham as set forth in the Fire Department's letter. It also does not comply with state building code requirements for building separation, and there are some other deficiencies. It would cram the development on the land to the front, and it would destroy any interior neighborhood feel with a sea of asphalt in the middle, where the applicant is proposing that community green with the saved grouping of vegetation and trees that are there already. Now, beyond these technical deficiencies, however, even if this third-party plan hypothetically did not have them, there is a larger concern with the plan. Specifically, the alternative design is not what the applicant submitted in response to the RFP. It is not the design initially reviewed with and complemented by both the Select Board and the Planning Board. It is not the design that was the basis of the town's award of the RFP project to Penrose. And it is not the design for rental housing that was submitted to this board for comprehensive review, and nor is it acceptable to the applicant for all of the reasons you'll hear discussed this afternoon. And that, I believe respectfully, is the biggest problem with this alternative sketch plan. The applicant's proposal, to the contrary, has designed and engineered to provide a safe, efficient, attractive, and well-thought-out housing development, meeting all requirements for the Fire Department, for stormwater, for wastewater, for landscaping. As a 40B application, the proposed development we submit respectfully meets the intent of the Chatham Housing Production Plan to, quote, "Increase Chatham's affordable, attainable, and accessory housing stock," end quote. The development is to be located on town-owned land with an experienced developer, both selected by the town through a public process, and vetted by the state with the issuance of the project eligibility letter. We respectfully submit that the proposal is consistent with local needs. That's the legal standard, as I mentioned, that you look at. With that, we appreciate your time listening to this introduction. Mr. Saketti would like to speak, and then we're going to turn it over to everyone else to go through the details on the plans. Thank you. Oh, and I'd just like to say we welcome questions, whether it's now, later, and throughout the afternoon.
Thanks, Andrew. Actually, what I'd like to do now is to transition over to our design team, who can walk you through the next several slides showing the changes made. Can folks hear me? Okay, perfect.
Yes, yes. Can I just, when you say change is made, are we taking it from last meeting? Would that be possible, or do we have to go back to the beginning of time?
We have a couple slides that just go back to the beginning, a couple slides only, and then it gets very quickly into--
And then we could focus, I mean, because, you know, by your own admission, you want to get focused, so do we.
Okay, and with that, I'll transition over to Paul Adaman with Union Studios to start with the architectural design.
Good afternoon. My focus right now is not so much the specifics of architectural design, because we reviewed that quite in detail last time, but I'll begin with some of the things that Mr. Singer had suggested in looking back at the RFP response and how we responded to those objectives specifically, primarily providing affordable, deeded affordable housing. That is modest preference for rental. We also really worked hard on the design and aesthetics that was outlined in the RFP by proposing multiple buildings, outdoor amenities for recreation, and landscaping with native species. This is not a proposal with a single building or two big buildings or single-family homes. This is one with a missing middle from housing that has three to six units in each of the buildings. That sort of typology provides a very necessary density to be able to create housing, much-needed housing on Cape Cod, and to provide a range of unit types and options, from one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, as well as accessible units. The buildings are smaller in scale. They are not apartment buildings that one would think they are. They're, as I mentioned, three to six units in each building, so very small in comparison to what one would think as an apartment building is. They're designed for energy efficiency, to meet the Massachusetts Stringent Energy Code, and also meet Penrose's standards and project goals of passive house design aligned. And then exceptional rental management, which Penrose does very well, and they'll be able to talk about, they talked about that in previous meetings. So since that RFP response and submission, we've been working hard, as Mr. Singer had mentioned. Some of the things I'd like to point out are some of the changes that you already know about. We arranged building locations throughout the site to make sure that the taller ones are furthest away from the butters. We increased the amount of parking from the proposed 1.3 to now the 1.75 as a compromise and refining of the parking in the site design to not overburn the site with too much impervious pavement, but also provide the parking per a lot of people's concerns. We also worked on relocating the trash enclosures and recycling enclosures to be further away from the property lines and from the butters. We preserved incorporated mature trees. We went out and flagged all of the mature trees, and were able to incorporate a majority of them into our landscape design. We also refined the community green along the way. The landscape architect has done a great job of incorporating those landscape features into a common green that is enjoyed by all of the residents of our proposal. Looking now toward a little bit of the architecture, we reduced all the heights of the residential buildings. Three buildings were reduced to be below 30 feet, as requested, and six buildings were reduced by one foot entirely. We reduced, brought down the entire second floor and the roof down by a foot. And that is outlined in your supplemental information that was submitted last week, but also we went over that in detail at our last meeting. We're continuing to refine the architectural materials and the finishes and details to respect the Chatham character and meet the historic business districts' design guidelines and procedures. We've also reduced the size of the management building by 18%. That is a new change. We eliminated the fitness room and created a much smaller footprint, reduced it by 18%. What this also helped us do is reduce the setback waiver requested along Main Street or Route 28. And I'd like to turn this over now to Joe Henderson.
Hi, good afternoon, Joe Henderson. I'm a civil engineer with Horsey Witten, and I'd like to walk through, starting with some of the site plan updates that we've provided. So you should have received an updated site utility and grading plan, along with a vehicle circulation plan. The updates include, like Paul mentioned, the smaller footprint and the revised management building footprint, and adding that resulted in an increased setback along the right-of-way from 1.8 feet to now 15 feet separation from the property line. Additionally, as Attorney Singer mentioned, we've revised the parking along Main Street to meet the Cape Cod Commission suggestions. That was 10-foot setback from the front of the building edge, is what they requested for all parking. That resulted in three locations, as shown on the red circles to the north, one spot lost in each of those locations, so that would be a total of three spaces reduced. Thirdly, we made some changes to the dumpster location in the western property line. You can see that is also circled there. We reduced that by two parking spaces and slid the dumpster over, and that resulted in an increase in buffer from 13.8 feet to 22.7 feet. Overall, five spaces were reduced from the project, so our parking ratio went from 1.85 to 1.75 parking spaces per dwelling unit. So we also included a fire vehicle circular-- So we also included a fire vehicle circulation plan for the town's ladder truck. As Attorney Singer mentioned, the Fire Department provided a letter, and that letter did support our proposal for a 24-foot-wide roadway with two-way travel. We have been working with them on this layout, and there was also a comment in that letter asking about the proximity of our turning radiuses to parking spaces. So that's what I've shown here. This blow-up is a visual of the area around Building 3. Those green lines you see on this plan, those represent the vehicle chassis, and the red lines represent the vehicle body or the wheels. We have a program that we use to basically drive the fire truck around the property to ensure that the chassis and the wheels are on asphalt, and none of the chassis swings will actually hit potentially parked vehicles within the parking spaces. So per the Fire Department's comment in their letter, we have updated our plan. We do plan to submit a revised plan that demonstrates, you know, full compliance with Next, I thought I would touch on some of the comments that we've had throughout the process, just related to different, you know, site design items. The first being, well, first off, the, some of these comments are traffic-related, and we have had discussions with the traffic engineer. That's Vanessa Associates, and they're not here, but we have reviewed these items with them and gotten their input. So first off is the one-way circulation. We've looked at both two- and one-way circulation at the site, and we feel that the two-way circulation is the safest option, and that also is what's preferred by the Fire Department, as they stated in their letter. The one-way, when you look at the one-way option, the concern is that if a vehicle enters the project and, say, misses a parking space, to get back or to get back to a parking space, they have to exit the site and enter back through the entrance. So you'd have to leave the site onto 28, come back into the property, and again, that would add to traffic concerns along 28. So that is, that is one of the major issues there. There's also been a question about right-turn-only exit, and with the right-turn-only exit, a vehicle that wanted to take a left-hand turn out of the project site would then have to take a right, travel to the safest location, wherever that may be, and then turn around and go back. And again, similarly, that's a traffic concern for 28. It also would potentially burden the local roads, too. Traffic signals and signalized intersections. The traffic engineer looked at this, and he noted that the scope of this project falls short of the size that would warrant a traffic signal on a state highway. Signalized intersections specifically, or a mid-block crossing also, is unlikely to be approved by Mass DOT at this site, given its proximity to the roundabout, and there's already a crossing there. Pedestrian traffic crossings, again, similarly, the traffic engineer's opinion is that this location wouldn't meet the warrants specified for that type of signal here. So it's related to the traffic code. Traffic calming has also come up. Speed tables are not warranted in a project of this scope, however, mainly because they do cause a plowing issue, chipping, breaking up with plowing, and it's a maintenance issue there. But however, I think the crosswalks could be painted and made of a different type of material, such as a paver, and I think that would assist in any type of traffic calming that could be done here at this site, based on its scope and size. The trash and recycling enclosures, there's two trash enclosures for the project. They, each one would have a dumpster and a recycle bin. So they're enclosures that contain several bins that would be used for the residents, and based on Penrose's experience, something like that is adequate for a project of this size. And lastly, the pervious parking. Pervious parking is not something we would recommend for any, for a multifamily use. It becomes a maintenance issue, needs to be, you know, maintained very frequently to actually function as pervious. So we would say that our project has been designed with its stormwater treatment system, infiltration treatment, to manage the stormwater per the Massachusetts Stormwater Regulations, and I expect that the peer review engineer will look at that very closely. So lastly, I just wanted to offer some plan comments on the alternative engineered plan that Attorney Singer mentioned. First off, the plan has a 16-foot-wide road, and as I mentioned before, this does not mesh with what the Fire Department would like to see. The outriggers on the fire vehicle, when extended, are 17 and 1/2 feet. So this, the truck could not extend its outriggers within the roadway as shown, and also 20 feet is the minimum per the National Fire Safety Standard. And again, I think that's referenced within the Fire Department's plan. One-way road, so the one-way roadway, again, this is a one-way road. I talked about one-way earlier, but two-way travel is preferred or is mentioned in and supported by in the Fire Department's letter that the board has. If a car, as I mentioned before, if a car enters the site, and it's a one-way road, and it turns into, say, the first parking stall, and it doesn't find a parking space, it has to circulate back onto 28 to get back into the site. So that is potential to create that traffic circulation issue. Also, all the aisles are 16 feet in width, and even though they're angled, that is not conducive to good conditions, especially if there's a pickup truck, say, that parks in a parking place, and there's cars surrounding it. That's not a, we don't feel that's a safe situation with that narrow width backing in and backing out. The building spacing, Attorney Singer mentioned that. This is less than what's typically required in, for building code and fire protection. Plans showed a separation as low as 11 feet between buildings. Trash and recycling, there's only one dumpster location, as opposed to the applicant has two locations, so just note that. Set a few more parking, just pointing out the parking ratio is 1.3 versus the applicant who's proposing 1.75 spaces. And the plan shows a large central asphalt parking area, and we typically see when you have a large asphalt area like this, it's more difficult to manage the runoff, particularly generates a lot of runoff in one location. So you'd have to treat, collect, treat, and infiltrate that runoff. So as opposed to the applicant's proposal, which has four tree trenches throughout the property, two underground chamber systems. The other point I'd like to make is just the, it's harder to shade if you have a large parking area, so that can contribute to what they call the heat island effect, which is just you've, you know, higher temperatures in that area, everyone's been out in a giant parking lot in the summer, generates a lot of heat. And lastly, I'd just point out the rear community green. It's located up against the south, I guess, of the property, and it's really not centrally located to the community, as opposed to the applicant's plan, where the community green is central to the people that are living there, the people can see their children if they're playing in the playground, they can congregate together in close proximity to their neighbors, and it's just a more safe situation. Also, there were no amenities I didn't see shown on the alternative engineering plan. And it just seemed like that was shown more of, I would say, a buffer to the neighbors as opposed to what we would consider a community green. So it just didn't have the same neighborhood feel. I think with that, I'm going to transfer over to Mark to talk about landscape.
And as I said last time, you're all welcome to sit down. You know, we know you're here, and--
Prefer to stand if that's okay.
Yep, absolutely.
Good afternoon. My name's Mark Warfel. I'm a landscape architect with Crowley Cotrell. I'm going to pick up right where Joe left off on the changes to the site. So we've updated the landscape site plan, which was provided to you in the supplemental submission, and I just want to run through those updates here quickly. The first piece is that with the changes to the parking and the trash enclosure, we were able to increase the buffer size on the western edge of the property, and we've supplemented that with more planting, as well as a, not only evergreen trees and screen trees, but in the area where we have the two large evergreen trees that we're saving, just west of Building 3 and Building 2, we've provided more evergreen shrubs to help close that gap. As well as on the southern property line, we've supplemented with more screen trees. Internal to the project, we've increased the planting that's along Main Street. So with the size change to the management building, we've increased the planted buffer that's at the front of the building, as well as on the side that faces the road. So it'll be a nice lush landscape with street trees, as well as flowering trees, and then we have a shrub layer and ground covers. So there's some images of those plants shown on the right of this slide. I want to turn back. We saw these last time, the sections with the butters, and we submitted these slides as part of the supplemental submission, but we can run through them just to show the differences. So this is the section that we saw last time through 33, Jesse's Landing. Again, I would like to remind the board that Building 6 is not seeking a waiver for the setback. And like we discussed last time, the house on Jesse's Landing does a lot of the screening for us, so Building 6 will be adequately screened by the existing house. We were asked to look at the view shed from the backyard, so we've added in a scaled person here and projected out what their view might be to the existing planted hedge that's on the abutting property, but also we've added screen planting along that southern edge. And as you'll see, the planting does a good job of adequately screening Building 6, and it'll only get better with time. So as these plants grow and fill in, it's going to become more and more opaque. Moving to 25, Jesse's Landing, so again, this is an image that we saw last time, and the house is doing a good job of screening the building from the street, but we also looked at the view from the backyard, and again, the existing planting, as well as the additional planting, do an adequate job of screening the building. I'd also like to remind the board again that this Building 4 is not seeking any rear or side yard setback waivers or height waiver. And then moving to the western property edge. So there's the existing private hedge that we'll be maintaining. Shown in the top-right photo are those two existing evergreen trees that we're able to preserve, and we'll be enhancing that buffer even more with evergreen shrubs underneath. And looking at the view from the backyard of the Levitt property, that existing private hedge, as well as the supplemental planting that we'll be adding, will hide much of Building 3. So, and again, Building 3 does not require a side yard setback waiver or a height waiver. So I want to spend a few minutes talking about circulation within and out of the site. So this is the right site to connect with the amenities of West Chatham. We took a look and measured from the site to the nearest crosswalk is about 230 feet, which is roughly a two-minute walk. So Joe mentioned the reasons why we can't introduce another sidewalk at this site across Main Street, but there already exists a crosswalk within a short distance. So here's a Google Street View image from the site, and walking down the sidewalk that we'll be connecting to on the south side of Main Street, you'll be at the crosswalk right when you're at the Dunkin' Donuts. Here's an image of that crosswalk. There's also a crosswalk on the other side of the Rotary and across Barnhill Road. This provides safe access to everything within this area. When we look at these connections, this is the extent you can reach within a five-minute walk. So from the site, you'll be able to access by foot much of the amenities that are in West Chatham, and, you know, a little bit longer still, you could reach even more. Moving back to the project site, we've extended that circulation along Main Street to our eastern property edge. So there's a sidewalk continued across the front of the project, and we've also introduced accessible crosswalks at the driveways. Looking at internal pedestrian circulation, it really happens in two loops. So there's an outer loop that connects all of the buildings and the parking with two accessible crosswalks, and then we have an inner loop that connects the management building and all of the amenity spaces. And I just want to remind that those amenities are the management building, the mail station, the community gardens, playground, there's a community terrace, and the open space. And this is served by a number of crosswalks that are also accessible. So in conclusion, we're providing circulation, extensive circulation within the project that's fully accessible, and there's a lot of thought and care that has gone into making this a community-centered design. With that, I'll turn it back over to the Penrose team.
Thanks, Mark. I'm Rio with Penrose again, and I'd like to bring out my colleague Carmen as well. I'm just going to quickly wrap up the presentation, sort of bring it back to the beginning. Since the RFP up until today, a lot, all this work we've been doing, the heart of it is producing units for people, for future residents. We recently completed our Fair project in Orleans, and that's 62 units that started leasing in April, and we received over 600 applications on that project. So I'm bringing it up because it's evidence that there's a significant need, and there's real people out there that need housing. And-- real people out there that need housing and that need housing right now. And our focus during this design has always been on coming up with a development that has a high quality of life for the people who live there. And secondly, have a development that can be professionally managed. And so I think you're familiar at this point with a lot of the design highlights of our development. You know, we have this central green, which we believe fosters community. The village-type feel also is an area of connections throughout the site. We also have the management building, which we've recently reduced. But that's still at the front where we see it as a welcoming front door for the development. Also, design highlights are, oh, for the management building, that the location of that is also important because we have, the property manager will be able to put eyes all throughout the property and in that central green where a lot of the amenities and outdoor recreation is happening. We've been making meaningful, meaningful changes since we first came for the first hearing. Those include reducing the height of buildings. We've revisited the site layout several times, and that was done to increase buffers to abutters. We've also reduced the management building as well, based on concerns about the size of that building on Main Street. Overall, our goal is to create a neighborhood feel that we think is exhibits Chatham character. And we think this development fits that. We also think that this is a development as designed that the people who will live there will be proud to live there. So Carmen, I'm not sure if you'd like to add anything?
I have a quick thing to add. I think I want to focus in on what Rio just said about how our focus in creating this design is thinking about the resident's quality of life. And their residents, this is building attainable workforce housing. We're not pushing the design to rent it for more because this is going to be income-restricted housing. We're not pushing for design changes so that we can sell them for more. These are workforce housing units. And our goal is to make sure that everyone who lives here will be proud to live here. Our approach isn't that it's workforce housing, there's so much demand, so whatever you build, they'll come. We really want to make sure that the residents here have a good quality of life. And as evidenced by what Rio said about our waiting list, our Orleans, every unit is one more family that we can house. And that's really our focus here is really the residents that we're going to be able to welcome here, hopefully sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that complete your presentation for now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, great. So before I read the letters, I just want to say that we understand that you've done a lot of work. And I just want to, from our end, I just want you to know that we understand our mandate. And this board not only listens to you, but we listen to you at all the other meetings you've been at. We've listened to the HBDC. I say listen, but it could be listen, could be watch. I don't watch it on TV, I listen to it on YouTube. And HBDC, the planning board, the historic, the affordable housing, you know, from the beginning of your process, more than one of us listened to all these meetings. So we listen, we read, we've read everything that's come through. And we, so like I said, we listen, we lead, we read, or we watch. So we're informed. And I just want to let you know that. We don't just walk in here and, you know, see what you have for today. We come prepared as well. And so when it comes to reading the correspondence today, I just want to first let everybody know, we've received over 100 pages of comments with multiple pages of attachments submitted to the board for this week's hearing, this week alone. And we have had those all distributed and reviewed by board members. They're posted on the town's website. I don't know whose that is, but I announced at the beginning, we want no gadgets to make any noise at all. It's distracting and it's actually rude. Thank you. So everything has been reviewed by members, posted on the town website, and sent to the applicant. There are four pieces of correspondences that we, that will be referenced for the record but will not be read here as they're lengthy. But again, they're all posted. We've received a letter in favor that's also very lengthy from Michael Shell of 91 Moon Penny Lane on July 10th with attachments, which have been distributed to members and read. In addition, the board received correspondence from Rick and Ella Levitt on June 16th, June 30th, and July 8th. Again, they've been distributed to the board and we've read them. So for today, I'm going to read the first seven letters. And then our vice chair is going to read more because I got to pass them out. And then after that, we will take comments from the audience. So beginning with our Chatham Fire and Rescue Department, this letter was received on July 10th. And it says, "To whom may concern, I am receipt of the most recent site plans, planned revisions for the project at 1533 Main Street in West Chatham, along with a memorandum submitted by the Law Offices of Singer &amp; Singer. The site plan revisions are acceptable from the fire department's perspective, maintaining adequate travel lane width, turning radius, radii for the department's largest apparatus, ladder truck. The only concern that I currently have is that there is a slight deviation in this rendering compared to the set of plans that were amended back in February, which were altered to ensure a safe turning radius, especially in front of Building Three. This version of the plans depicts a body swing of the ladder truck encroaching on parking spaces in that area. It's difficult to ascertain whether there is a change in the dimension that altered the trajectory or if it's simply due to a nuance within the engineering software. But I would like to see that buffer maintained. The ladder truck is equipped with a bucket overhanging the front of the apparatus, which is difficult for the driver to visualize while turning. From the site plans, a larger vehicle, a vehicle that has not pulled all the way into the parking spot completely, could obstruct the ladder's truck's access. The width of the travel lane is of utmost importance to allow full operational capacity of the ladder truck. To operate at full capacity, reach height, reach height, swing, and angle, the ladder's truck's outriggers must be fully extended, taking up 17 feet 6 inches of a footprint. This typically requires the use of both lanes in a bidirectional traffic flow plan. Reducing a single lane would only negatively impact the operational capacity of the ladder truck, but it would also have a negative impacts on the turning radii. For these reasons, I am in favor of maintaining a bidirectional directional flow of traffic. The NFPA is responsible for establishing codes and industry standards." And then he goes on to quote the rules as to that. And that was from Justin Tavano, our chief of the fire department. Next, we have a letter from Hack Housing Assistance by Alyssa Magnotta, CEO. She tells us on July 11th, she's writing to provide input for support of the Penrose application. Cape Cod is in the midst of a housing crisis that is literally decades in the making. In Chatham, the need for housing for our workforce is particularly acute. The availability of this land and the town's willingness to support this project provides a special opportunity to make a meaningful difference. We need more housing of all types on Cape Cod, and households in Chatham need to earn $300,000 to own a home, yet the median income is 86. Even renting a home in the lower and outer Cape requires an annual salary that is out of reach for many of our workforce. Your work is essential. We urge the town to proceed with all due alacrity and dispatch in reviewing the details of the proposed development, resolving any concerns in the planning and design of the project, and issuing the permits so that construction can proceed and families can be stably housed. This parcel is particularly well-suited for multifamily housing as it's adjacent to public transit and within walking distance from many small businesses along Route 28. Our organization submitted proposals for the opportunity to develop a project on this land, but we were not selected. Even still, we recognize the importance of this project and want to see Penrose bring this project into fruition because if they succeed, we all benefit." Next, we have a note from Tracy Cannon. And this comes to us on July 17th. And she tells us that she's writing today regarding the proposed housing project to be located on Main Street. She's aware that there are several issues currently under discussion, and she'd like to be heard on one today. Excuse me. That is the consideration of a community building for this site. Based on many years of managing the Chatham Housing Authority, which has 70 units ranging from one to three bedrooms, I feel I can speak to the importance of such a structure. The details of what exactly it would include, I think, can be passed out over time, but I feel the space is crucial to the neighborhood. I've toured many affordable housing developments, and almost all of them, especially those with a variety of unit sizes, have a community building, and a lot of them have been very well utilized. It's my experience, our community building here at the Anchorage has been a crucial space for our tenants. It's been used for many purposes, ranging from staff meetings, board meetings, birthday parties, memorial services, et cetera. Recently, three of our tenants, who happen to be musicians, shared their love of music and gathered to jam. These are not things done easily for people who have to travel to the town community center. This building is in the heart of their neighborhood. In many cases, it encourages people who would otherwise stay home alone to come out and be social. It is also symbolically a place of closeness and comfort. Whenever there is a storm, a power loss, people gravitate to the community building where they all know they'll find fellow residents, our staff, who have, also have concerns and answers. There are bulletin boards with all manner of information, and our resident services coordinator has a space there as well as the administrative staff. It serves a very important, as a very important mooring for many people. I respectfully ask that you keep this building in the plan for the neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration. Next, we have a note from Lucia Lucy Quinn, 186 Cross Street. And that comes on July 16th. She tells us that she's writing to express her continued support for Penrose housing. Given that the RFP for this project was initiated by and improved by the town, she's simultaneously amazed and somewhat aghast at the layers of discussion, mostly civil debate and review and the elapsed time required to make this desperately needed housing a reality. During the recent town elections, one of the themes expressed was to keep Chatham-Chatham. Whatever decade, decade forms the basis of that desire for time to stand still, it hasn't and it won't. The lack of available and affordable housing is accelerating the town's transition into a seasonal resort enclave, which puts at risk the history and soul of our village and the many families who have been here for many generations. I also want to call out and express gratitude to the Penrose team, who have responded patiently. And smart people can disagree, but this team has made modifications every step of the way. Next, we have a note from Dee Holt, Friends of Trees. July 15th, 2025, she tells us, "The Friends of Trees is very concerned about the number of trees proposed to be taken down. We strongly advocate for revisions that would cause the least disturbance to the natural wooded area as possible, such as 1533 Main Street conceptual alternative plan. Although trees will be necessarily removed, the alternative plan maximizes the use of that portion of the lot that has already developed and minimizes the intrusion into the wooded area further. It creates a common and intended area intended for recreation that is not surrounded by asphalt. It incorporates many more trees surrounding the play area and is positioned away from traffic and the vehicle exhaust that it will generate. At the May 2024 Annual Town Meeting, Friends of Trees Warden proposed a tree bylaw that was overwhelmingly passed by voters. Although the bylaw primarily addresses shade trees, it also requires the town to minimize cutting down all trees on town property. Minimizing the adverse environmental impact is exactly what the bylaw is intended to accomplish. The proposed tree removal here is in addition to other, the other two properties which will be developed for housing. These, those two properties are completely wooden and are slated for housing development and will require the removal of a tremendous amount of trees, replacing mature ones. It'll be decades before they're replaced. Chatham is losing a massive, massive number of trees. In addition, the, to these sites mentioned, the airport's plan to cut down trees, in addition, necessary clearing of acres of forest for the water treatment and pump stations, then factor in trees that are removed from private property, the cumulative impact is significant. Preserving trees everywhere should be a town priority. Wooden open spaces should be preserved and not converted to sites for housing due to their lack of vital environmental, ecological, and community benefits. Removing wooded land for development can lead to increased flooding, urban heat, and the loss of biodiversity. Friends of Trees request the ZBA give serious consideration to the negative impact on the environment." Thank you. Next, we have a note from Carol Kenner, 68 Sea Change Lane, South Chatham, written on July 14th or received. Kindly note my vigorous support for the Penrose application. We are full-time residents of South Chatham. Affordable housing is a top priority for our family. We have a disabled son who receives services from wonderful direct support staff who find it hard to get housing on Cape Cod. Thank you for your service, Carol Kenner." The next slide, I don't know if you want to read them all. Sigga? Oh, no? Okay. Okay. That concludes my contribution. Paul, Paul Semple, take it away.
Good afternoon. We received a letter on July 14th from George Myers. I am George Myers, a retired attorney, mechanical engineer, and a former Chatham resident, summer resident, and visitor to Chatham for over 60 years, now residing in Venice, Florida. For the past several years, I have worked with Rick Levitt and other Chatham residents, boards, and staff on Chatham's affordable housing needs. Rick and I prepared a proposed alternative plan for 1533 Main Street based on input from various town boards, commissions, and residents. Because that plan was not to scale, we commissioned a civil engineer to prepare a scale drawing of the plan entitled 1533 Main Street Conceptual Alternative Plan that Rick submitted to the board. In our efforts to address official and community concerns with the Penrose plan, we used AI, artificial intelligence, extensively to research affordable housing developments, zoning bylaws, laws and regulations, and compare the conceptual alternative plan with the Penrose plan. AI verified what we suspected. AI described the conceptual alternative plan as, quote, "far superior," unquote, to the Penrose plan in every respect, including especially buffering and compatibility with adjacent neighborhoods. A better mix of missing middle architecture, improved parking and pedestrian safety, simplified one-way, all internal traffic circulation, less impervious surface, more community green space, much greater preservation of trees and vegetation, safer ingress and egress to and from the site, less noise, light, and environmental impact, and a less vehicle-dominated design, resulting in a conclusion that the Penrose plan is not appropriate for the site on which it is to be located. In its July 9 submission to the board, Penrose addressed the previous not-to-scale plan rather than the conceptual alternative plan despite having a copy of the scale plan. To the extent any changes are needed to the conceptual alternative plan to satisfy the fire department, building codes, or other technical requirements, those are simple and straightforward revisions that can be accomplished by any professional. As for Penrose, issues that with one-way traffic flow, the planning board suggested assignment of parking spaces and accepted the proposed right and left turns from the exit. Though not sure- Though not shown, a resident, quote, "neighborhood," unquote, similar to that of Penrose plan can be located across the community green of the conceptual alternative plan with better sheltering from Route 28 and parking without being completely surrounded by the 30-foot-tall buildings. All Penrose submissions to date have been woefully inadequate in addressing the key issue of compatibility with adjacent neighborhoods, especially its impact narrative on page three of its application. Its suggestion that locating the taller building at the front of the property will avoid conflict with the budding neighbors strains credulity. Moreover, the sections A-C, cross-sections, of the Penrose submission are misleading with respect to abutter proximity and privacy because they do not depict what Jesse's Landing and Bar Hill Road direct abutters will view from their respective northern and eastern property lines, their rear windows, backyards, and pools. Because the conceptual alternative plan comprises the same number of dwelling units and a reduced footprint for buildings, parking, hardscape, and infrastructure, it is likely more economical than the Penrose plan, and its adoption by Penrose is highly recommended. Respectfully, George Myers." And then we have a memo submitted by Mark Janess, which was dated July 4, 2025, to Sarah Clark. Dear Ms. Clark, regarding the proposed alternative site plan for Penrose development at 1533 Main Street, perence Cape Cod Cod Chronicle, June 26. The one thing that struck me about the drawings in the article is the lack of any meaningful setback between the proposed buildings and Main Street. A setback of at least 20 feet from the sidewalk would seem appropriate for safety, perence Main Street being one of the busiest traffic arteries in town, close perence, and aesthetics, perence in preserving the character of the community, close perence. I would think future tenants occupying the buildings facing Main Street would also prefer a corridor of open space between their windows and the roadway. The desire to have a common green placed in the rear of the property should be balanced against an appropriate amount of landscaped space in the front of the property, the side most visible to and remembered by the public. I would be grateful if you would forward this message to the committee members for their consideration." And then we have an email from Michelle Maloney Kitz, dated July 14. I am a year-round resident of Chatham and active in the community. I strongly support the Penrose application and urge the ZBA to move forward quickly. Given the size of the problem, lack of affordable housing, and the time it takes to construct, we must move forward rapidly to approach the, to approve the project. I'm particularly impressed that we can achieve some of our goals for housing in such a terrific location. Unfortunately, I am unable to attend the meeting in person, but did want to be sure to send a letter of support." Then we have a memorandum from Tilda and Bill Beistrum. Our names are Tilda Beistrum and Bill Beistrum, and we are writing to express our enthusiastic support for the Penrose plan's affordable housing development in Chatham. We believe this project offers a vital opportunity to address the critical need for affordable housing options within our community. The initiative's proposed potential to positively impact the lives of Chatham residents and contribute to a more inclusive and equitable community is significant, and we urge you to give it your full consideration. Over the last 30 years, it seems that the issues which affect Nantucket also seem to affect Chatham, but with about a 15-year delay before an issue's impact to Chatham's reaches, reaches the same extent as on the island. Last weekend's article in the New York Times and this week's article in the Cape Cod Times both detail the impact and lack of affordable housing has had on that island community. We encourage you to approve the Penrose plan to avoid the outcomes currently found on Nantucket and as an investment in Chatham's future." And then we have a letter from William and Beverly Cullinor, 98 Riviera Drive, to the members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I am a strong supporter of the Penrose application for comprehensive permit number 25-34 at 1533 Main Street. The town of Chatham and its residents are in need of affordable-attainable housing for a number of reasons. I am 93 and my wife is 91, and at some time in the not-too-distant future, we may need assistance in many ways. We have a number of friends who are our age and are very worried about their future and the need to employ local help so that they can remain in their homes. The coffee shops and stores that we use are currently having trouble lining up help. I am a former teacher and among other municipal employees, we would have a difficult time working and living in Chatham. In my experience, municipal employees and the town gain a great deal if these employees live locally. Please give a positive vote to this application. It is important for many facets of Chatham. I would attend the meeting, but have a prior commitment." And then we have an email from Thomas Clark, dated July 14. Honorable members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, I am writing to express my strong support for the proposals to build low and moderate income housing in the town of Chatham. As a member of this community, I believe that expanded, expanding affordable housing options is essential for fostering a diverse, vibrant, and sustainable town for all who live and work here. Access to affordable housing is a cornerstone of a healthy community. It enables families, young professionals, and older residents to remain in Chatham, contributing to our local economy and enriching the fabric of our neighborhoods. By supporting this proposal, the town of Chatham demonstrates a commitment to inclusivity and to meeting the needs of residents from all walks of life. The high cost of housing in our region has put tremendous pressure on many individuals and families, forcing some to seek opportunities elsewhere or to live in unstable and unsatisfactory conditions. By approving this proposal, the Zoning Board of Appeals will help address the critical shortage of affordable houses, homes, and ensure that Chatham remains a welcoming place for teachers, first responders, essential workers, and others who are vital to our community's success. Furthermore, the addition of low and moderate income housing will strengthen Chatham's economy by enabling local businesses to attract and retain employees who might otherwise be unable to live nearby. It will also promote a sense of belonging and connection, reinforcing the values that make our town such a special place to call home. I urge the Zoning Board of Appeals to approve this proposal and to seize this important opportunity to invest in the future of Chatham. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration of the project." And then we have a letter dated July 14, 2025, from Stephen Daniel. Honorable members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, I write to endorse and wholly support the Penrose application for a comprehensive permit relating to the Buckley property at 0 and 1533 Main Street. While I make this endorsement strictly as an individual, I do so having the benefit of studying and working to support the creation of attainable and affordable housing in Chatham during my tenure on the Finance Committee. In February of 2020, a working group of Finance Committee I led submitted for review and approval by the full committee a detailed analysis of Chatham's housing situation and prescriptions for its improvement. The 19-page report attached hereto, hereto, was unanimously endorsed by the Finance Committee for submission to the Select Board for its consideration and action. As the report noted, in an effort to potentially increase traction on addressing the challenges of attainable community housing, the Chatham Finance Committee established the Community Housing Working Group in June of 2019. The charge to the working group was to, one, survey Chatham's current efforts around community housing, including the organizational structures behind those efforts; two, survey the efforts of other Cape towns and area organizations involved in addressing the attainable housing issue in an effort to, quote, "learn from good," unquote; and, three, present its findings and recommendations to the Board of Selectment for its consideration. To that end, the working group has met or spoken with 13 entities, please see Appendix A, over the past seven months to learn what we could. While we are keenly aware that no one is eager to receive unsolicited advice, the working group believes strongly that successfully addressing the issue of attainable community housing in Chatham will require both focus and prioritization if we truly are committed as committee to addressing this issue. Any success to, any course to success will be marked, we believe, by, one, effective and thoughtful community engagement; two, political will; three, funding; and four, accountability. The absence of any of these elements will, we believe, lessen the probability of success of any effort undertaken." Emphasis added by him. The project to date has both secured funding and engaged in thoughtful community engagement. Based on the prescription of the Finance Committee, is now time for submitting both the accountability and the political will to, in order to secure the success of this desperately needed project. Additionally, it was in my capacity as chairman of the Finance Committee that the town manager requested me to join a working group to assist with the negotiation of the Land Development Agreement, the LDA, with Penrose. Over the course of nearly three months, the working group thoughtfully and assiduously represented the interests of the town of Chatham in the negotiation of the contract with Penrose. Working alongside experienced town council, the working group was able to materially improve the terms and conditions of the transaction documents to the benefit of Chatham. I would also make note of the endorsement of this important project by those entities which submitted responses to Chatham's request for proposal and which were not awarded the project. I believe that the endorsements post-Penrose award by the three competitors for this project is reflective of the critical need for additional attainable and affordable housing in Chatham. I am encouraged by the positive views publicly expressed by members of the planning board in their evaluation of this important project and wish to reiterate my strong support of Penrose's application for a comprehensive permit. Best regards, Stephen S. Daniel." That, I think, concludes our correspondence.
That concludes our correspondence. Now, let's see. We won't take a break now, but we're going to probably take a break at 4:00. I, I see you, Mr. Riley, and when I'm ready to acknowledge people, I will consider that you've raised your hand first. So now, we're just going to go through the audience. Can you raise your hand if you want to speak at all, just so I get an idea? Okay. So, as you know, it's three minutes a person. We ask that you don't repeat maybe what you've said last time or what's, you know, just try to be, you know, respectful to the fact that a lot of people want to talk. Just keep that in mind. So, three minutes a person, and I'm going to start with Mr. Riley, just to be fair, because he did raise his hand first. He was heads up, because he's been here before. He knows the drill. Can you sit down, sit down, Penrose?
We also have Mr. Buckley online.
Yeah, and we have Mr. Buckley online, just, would you consider sitting down, Penrose? Or sort of moving away from the speaker? That would be helpful, especially when the speakers aren't in your favor.
Good afternoon, Bill Riley.
One more, one more thing.
Mark, are we able to put the clock on the big screen so the public can see it as well?
So, I'm very strict about the three minutes, so, Mr. Riley, go right ahead.
I agree, but can we have the picture back up of the Penrose plant?
Sure. Absolutely. Okay, we're going to, we started the clock, so proceed.
All right, thank you. First, I want to repeat what I know the Levitts have said to you before, and that is they, they support the idea of affordable and attainable housing at this location and, and the number of units. The, I wanted the one that shows the adjoining properties also, please. In my experience, a project that goes through a hearing process like this, listening to concerns of, legitimate concerns, of neighbors and other interested persons, always comes out as a better project. The, can we show the adjoining properties, too? Also, the...
Do you know which plan page it was, Bill? This is what I have.
It's page 21, it's page 21 of the 19-page of the July 9 submission by... Yeah, okay. Be nicer with larger, but okay. That's perfect. All right, so, the, the concerns that my clients have really have to do with the size, the height of the, of the buildings.
When you say your clients, Mr. Riley, are we talking about the Levitts, or are we talking about...
Talking about the Levitts, we're talking about the owners on Uncle Jesse's and Eastwood Companies is also an abutter with a vacant lot in that location. And so, they're concerned about the height of the buildings being 35 feet and basically 15 feet or less from their property lines. And so, one of the things that the guidelines for affordable housing say is that these projects should fit in the context of the neighborhood. And so, I know that Mr. Singer and his team have suggested that they do fit in the context of the neighborhood, but I want to point out that every building that surrounds this property is either one-story or one-and-a-half-story. And the Penrose project, the buildings were essentially 35 feet tall. They have reduced them to 32, 33 feet, you know, but they still are much taller than the adjoining properties. And the, so, the goal that we have is to encourage them to reduce the height of the buildings so they more closely reflect our zoning bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Okay, who's next? I'm going to go on this side, and I see David Oppenheimer. Please, go ahead.
David Oppenheimer, and I'm speaking as a former member of the Affordable Housing Trust. First of all, I want to, I thank the Penrose for their respectful and well-considered responses to the concerns expressed by this board and to all of the real issues that were brought up by the neighbors and people that are concerned with this. They've addressed height. I think they've done a great job addressing height. There are a few places where it's, where they're asking for somewhat of a waiver, but it's not the entire roof line. It's more of the element of the, of the loft portion to get, so they get the three-bedroom units. Parking, they've, they've changed the parking to meet, to address the concerns. There's more open space. They've reduced the size of the building and everything else. They've dealt, addressed landscape, and they've done a wonderful job with landscaping, moved the dumpsters, which were legitimate concerns and things like that. One question that was raised at a previous meeting by one of the members of this board was valuations of abutting properties, while, and why I don't think that really is relevant, I would say that, you know, some of the people that bought on Jesse's Landing, it was prior to this being proposed, I believe, a week or two ago, a house sold on Jesse's Landing that abuts this property in the southeast corner for $3.2 million. And I believe that they know what's going on, so I would suggest that that addresses that, that comment. We now have a plan that's been proposed by some of the neighbors. I'm going to call it the Levitt Plan, because it's been referred to that way, that involved AI. As the time I spent two years on the Affordable Housing Trust, we had to use our somewhat flawed own intellect, not artificial intelligence. We had to use our own experience of over 200 years of us living here, combined, several people for well over 50 years, knowing what people need in this town, knowing what they do, how they work, what they appreciate, which is landscaping trees and things like that. I'm not sure we can compete with AI. They must, it's much smarter than we are, but I think we know the town better, and we recommended this plan, and I think it should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to go, that hand, that was the next one I saw. Yes, go right ahead. And there is a microphone in the middle of, that's faster.
Hi, I'm Matt Swenson, 1470 Main Street, which is Idar Duck cottages, and probably, as I look around, I'm the longest resident of that area. I've lived there for 25 years. And there's two things I wanted to bring up is, one, over and over, people have said that there's no affordable housing and, in this area, but really, organically, the area that you're talking about has the most affordable housing that I know of. I mean, between the apartments over the old FCC, my own place, Idar Duck cottages, the Gould compound, the two apartment complexes on Weldon Way, the Master Mariner, the apartments over Dunkin' Donuts, the apartments across from Joe Buckley's, not Joe Buckley, Benny Nick's old shop. There is, I mean, we have probably one of the most naturally organic, you know, low-income in Cape Cod, I don't think, or in Chatham at least. I know more than Moon Penny, and I know more than Stage Island. And, and over and over, people keep saying this community needs it, but I think there already is a very strong affordable community there. And I think when we combined those residents with the existing businesses, also our family's motel, that's another 30... motel, that's another 32, if you go down the way, the other rentals, I mean, the traffic flow, everyone says it's fine, I mean, there's already a ton of people in a very, very dense area, and there already is a large coalition of low-income and affordable people living here. And the idea that people keep getting up and saying, oh, there's no affordable housing in West Chatham, I mean, they're my tenants, they're my friends, the people I grew up with, West Chatham is, that area is a cluster of affordable housing, and it doesn't need this giant addition, that's just going to add more density, more traffic, it's just problematic overall.
Thank you for your comments. We know we're going to go on this side of the room, and then we're going to go online. Michael Schell, please, go ahead.
Mike Schell, Chatham. I thought we were going to have four minutes today, so I'm going to submit my remarks. I just want to read the first and last paragraphs of what I prepared for today. This is a friendly 40B. We sponsored it, it came at the town's invitation, and it started over 20 years ago and has been repeated many times. My concluding paragraph is, at Chatham's invitation, Penrose is presenting Chatham with a plan for 32 units of affordable housing and 16 units of attainable housing. It's an excellent plan. Penrose is an ideal partner for Chatham. Union Studio designed the project. Union Studio is the Cape Cod Commission's partner for its missing middle planning initiative. I'm talking about this initiative. We have an all-star team and a magnificent opportunity to conclude our 20-plus-year effort successfully. Let's not let the perfect be the enemy of the good, indeed, not the excellent be the enemy of the good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Now, we're going to go online to SB, Stephen Buckley, I presume?
You presume correctly. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I have a question, I'm hoping that the three-minute, it won't be a three-minute answer, and I'll lose my time for making a comment, but in a couple of previous forums, the suggestion was made that the buildings that are being built there have siding that's not all the same color, so it won't look like a housing development, it'll look more like a neighborhood. And so, but I haven't seen anything in the documents that are available today to know whether or not that's going to be, whether Penrose has agreed to do that, or, you know, so, anyway, that's, I have a question if they're, if I missed it someplace, or if they've...
So, you can continue on with your comment, and we'll ask Penrose that later, not to take up your time. So, what else did you want to tell us?
Yes, having lived on the property, former Buckley property, for several years, I have walked around there, and yes, it would be nice, I believe, especially with 48 units going there, and hopefully, some young children, that people will be walking all around, and people will not be, if somebody's walking from Chatham, downtown Chatham, they will be on the sidewalk on the opposite side of the street, and they, knowing human nature, will not walk all the way down to the Dunkin' Donuts to cross over and then come all the way back in order to go to where they live. So, I don't know what the criteria is, but the thing is, people and small children will see home, and they will cross where it makes the most sense. And hopefully, we won't have somebody, we won't decide to put in a crosswalk after some young child has been hit. The other thing is, there is an amenity right across the street, there was a map there showing amenities, but there's a great place for young kids to play in the woods, which we used to do when I grew up in Chatham, go out and play in the woods. That's his town-owned land right across there, and so, I see kids, when they're tired of playing on the common area there, going off to explore in the woods across the street. So, that's my concern, is that there'll be plenty of reasons to cross the street right there, and so, I would hope that whoever decides that, I just want to go on the record as saying, there should be a crosswalk there somewhere that accommodates all this, all these additional pedestrians that we see. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and if it makes you feel any better, that's top on my list to talk about, and we have some hope on that, based on our memorandum. What were you going to say?
Rob Schoen.
Rob, Rob Schoen, please go ahead.
Yeah, hi, thank you. 36 Jesse's Landing. I have a quick comment about fencing. I noticed in the latest Penrose memo, they were really opposed to having any kind of perimeter fencing, and, you know, they said that it would be, it sent the wrong message, that it would be exclusionary or non-inclusive, and I just don't, I didn't think that was really, you know, very fair. I mean, a lot of the properties have fencing between, you know, fencing them off, and we're still very close and tight with the neighbors, you know, I think, I don't think that fencing is really unusual. And if you think about it, if you look at the map, people that are in the Penrose community, if they want to go to Harding's Beach, say, they're going to have to walk, right, they're going to, in order not to go on private property, they're going to have to walk down Main Street to the Dunkin' Donuts and then go down Harding's Beach Road. It's going to be very tempting for the kids especially, and maybe some adults, to cut through the private property in Jesse's Landing to get a significant head start on the walk to the beach, and so, you know, I think the fencing is not an unreasonable request from the Jesse's Landing community. That's my, that's the extent of my comments.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
I'm going to speak in two different, two different hats on. I'm speaking now as...
As long as it's not two different languages, because...
What's that? My name is Henry Marcelly, 32 Jesse's Landing, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Jesse's Landing Homeowners Association, most of them are here. We, the undersigned, support the construction of much-needed affordable housing on the Buckley property in 1533 Main Street. We also recognize that there are many approaches and options that are available to the developer with respect to building type, size, configuration, location on the site, building materials, colors, landscaping, green space, dumpsters, parking, et cetera. Penrose has proposed their approach for developing affordable housing on the site. The proposed plan utilizes several large, tall apartment buildings close to existing homes. Several slight modifications to the proposal have been made as a result of input from the ZBA, various boards, commissions, and the public. Despite these modifications, several large buildings remain in their originally proposed locations to the detriment of the existing neighbors and the butters. We have reviewed the proposed alternate submitted by Rick Levitt. While we recognize we are not design professionals, the plan was developed by a civil engineering professional. The alternate plan appears to be a viable approach that maintains the originally proposed number of units at the appropriate mix of apartment types, reduces the parking to a number used on other comparable projects, and most importantly, locates the common green to the rear of the property, ameliorating many of the concerns expressed by the neighbors. We urge the ZBA and Penrose to consider the alternate plan as a viable and preferable approach to satisfying the need for affordable housing in Chatham. It's signed by all of the members. There are 10 lots, everybody is there representing, including Eastward, who owns the 10th lot that's not developed. I'm now speaking as Henry Marcelly, citizen. I have read all the correspondence, most of the, most of it centers around the need for affordable housing. We agree that we need affordable housing. We agree that it's a good site for it. So, that, let's put that to bed, that there's opposition, there's no opposition from our group about affordable housing on the Buckley property. The question is, how do we fit it in and make it compatible with the 13 neighbors, single-family homes who are here today and will have to live with whatever you decide? You're the ZBA, you're the final arbiter here. Please remember that there were three firms that responded to the RFP. Each of their proposals looked very different, they weren't the same. We sat in all the meetings, we saw it. So, there are several approaches to developing the Buckley property. To date, I have not seen any effort or attempt to modify the Penrose plan to consider relocating the common green to the rear of the parcel, reducing the impact to the neighbors. I believe there is a solution in front of us that needs further exploration, discussion, and evaluation. You have the authority and responsibility to make it happen. Thank you for your service to our community, and we would appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Man in the back.
Hi, Frank Messina, South Chatham, Chairman of the Historical Commission. I just quickly want to reiterate the comments that you were giving from the Historical Commission, pretty much unanimous in terms of, you know, great job, but really, they could do a lot better relative to attempting to meet the character and the, and the sense of places we use, like to use the term in Chatham. You know, it's a cookie-cutter development, and I, you know, they did, they did a nice job, you know, in terms of rebutting everything here, and I wish they would have spent as much time and did a little engineering to look at the alternate plan. It could work, you know, there are things that could be done, and I think, as the previous speaker said, I hope you send them back to the drawing board. The plan was approved by the former Housing Committee, okay? There's a new one now, maybe things will change. The point of the, is that, yes, everybody wants affordable housing, everybody thinks there's a need, we need to do something, but you could do it a hell of a lot better and spend a little more time and maybe a little more money to try and look at the alternate plan, to see if you can meet the needs of the neighbors, meet the needs of the HBDC and the Historical Commission, and provide something we could all be proud of, not another cookie-cutter housing development. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ron Bergstrom.
Yeah, just, this isn't tall enough. If I could get... You know, my, excuse me, my experience with affordable housing in Chatham goes back to, oh, maybe 20 years when we did the Lake Street project, which is probably one of the most successful affordable housing projects in town or anywhere on the Cape, very similar to this one. I think you have to make some decisions, or some decisions have already been made, we know we need affordable housing in Chatham. Yes, there are places where you can try to get in, you know, if you're lucky, if you know someone, but the vast majority of people who come here to work, you know, who have to be policemen, or firemen, or teachers, or employees of the town, have a very difficult time finding a place to live, and that has financial aspects, because we have to pay more, we have to pay people more to live here because it's so expensive, you know. So, I'm, to let you know, I'm in complete support of this project. I think it's gone through all the vetting, and all the meetings, and all the discussions that are necessary when you look at a project of this size and expense. And, you know, there's been some suggestions that Penrose has not done this, and not done that. Well, you know, I'm not an architect. Sometimes, you just have to rely on those who know what they're doing, who've spent their careers and their reputations on presenting something. There's no, they have no motivation to be in any way deceptive or to not provide the best recommendations that they possibly can. Now, as far as the alternative plan goes, I mean, I'm not going to ask you, you know, what your job is, but this is the application that's in front of you, okay? It seems to me the ZBA is deciding yes for no on this. Whether this, whether there's an alternative to that, that's a political decision, it's made by the town. Your decision is, is this acceptable? Is it a good project? Is it going to meet the needs of the community, and is it fulfill the requirements that we have for affordable housing? Yes, it's on the street. Affordable housing is concentrated in what we call neighborhood centers, which tend to be on Main Street. We don't want them pushed into the woods. We want them to be in already-developed areas, and even though this particular parcel is not heavily developed, it is in a concentrated neighborhood of West Chatham, and there are, there are amenities there that people can access. The town needs, you know, we're never going to accommodate everybody, but we like to keep community character, and the community character is not just tied up in the environment, it's tied up in the population. Are we going to have families with kids, you know? Are we going to have retirees, second homeowners? Are we going to become a town that has just a few people who are second homeowners, or retired, or so on, and it's not going to be the kind of real place that we like to think of when we have a small town like Chatham? So, I don't want to go on, but I'm in support of this project. I urge you to look at this project, and this is the application that's in front of you. Do you think it's a good application? Does it meet the requirements that you're asking for? Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Levitt, you are next.
I'm Rick Levitt, 31 Barn Hill Road, I'm on a butter. In response to the previous statement, this project has been, has had many adaptations to it from the original plan, so coming up with an alternative plan at this point, I don't believe is unusual. We're all disappointed that, in the Penrose response, it's been dismissive of thoughtful suggestions by Chatham officials, ignoring the scaled alternative plan based on those official suggestions that respects neighboring, single-family homes. Penrose plan fails to satisfy Chatham's RFP specifying respect for adjacent, single-family neighborhoods. That's all we're asking. Building height matters, but proximity matters more. Large, multifamily apartment buildings 17 feet from single-family homes aren't the only solution to Chatham's housing needs. Penrose's Swift Landing, multifamily development in Wareham, has 50-foot setbacks from adjacent, single-family homes. Housing Assistance Corporations, Melpet Farms, multifamily development, and Dennis is setback from adjacent, single-family homes more than 50 feet. You're not limited to a binary decision, approve or disapprove this plan. Under 40B, you can require greater setbacks when you make a finding that the Penrose plan has excessive massing and scale that does not respect our adjacent, single-family homes or neighborhoods. A reasonable guide for such finding is, such a finding is to ask yourself, would I approve large, multifamily apartments 17 feet from my home that rob me of my privacy and deprive me of quiet enjoyment of our home? In this case, however, it's not necessary for you to impose greater setbacks that would lower the unit count. Maintaining existing neighborhood integrity and Penrose's desired 48 units can be achieved by simply relocating the common green to the southern boundary as shown in the alternative plan. Research of Housing Appeals Committee decisions up in Boston shows that HAC would favor this approach as being fair to all parties. Finally, I'll repeat what I said before. Our neighborhood welcomes affordable housing that respects the neighborhood and is fair to all parties. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who wants to go next? Is there anybody over here? No? Okay, ma'am, go.
My name is Friscilla Smith. My grandson would probably say that I'm here to represent the interests of the 25-to-30-year-old In 2002, I moved to Chatham full-time with my daughter and my four-year-old grandson. My grandson has had, been privileged, lived in this town all these years, to go through the public school system, which is just wonderful, which got him to a point where, when looking for a college, he got into almost any college he wanted to on almost full scholarships. He has made lifelong friends in this town. He loves this town. He went on to graduate school and now lives in California. But he has a dream. He would love to come back to this town and settle. He is now 28 years old, and when, he visits often because he loves it so much. When he looks around and he sees all the gray-haired people, and we talk about what he might do when he comes back, and he's a very talented young man, he could start a business on lots of things, I can tell that it's not quite what it might, what he might like. So, what he might like is to see more young families here and... So, what he might like is to see more young families here, and friends, and people in his age group. I think this is a wonderful plan, and hopefully, it will be done by the time that he gets his act, not, he has actors together, but figures out maybe what new business he might like to start in this area. I have one more story about my wonderful grandson. When he was in fourth grade, and you know how at the end of the year, they have those days when they're outside and they run their little, you know, ball exercises and things? He was on a team running, and they were winning, and they turned around, and they came back, and they were going to win. And Ryan looked around and saw one of the people on his team, a young girl who obviously didn't, wasn't able to run. He went back and got her, and took her hand, and brought her forward. This is the kind of young person we want living in this town. Thank you.
And I was tempted to let you go longer, because I'm a runner, but you didn't need it. So, we're going to go to the next person who raises their hand that I see. Okay, the woman, right there, yes. I apologize if I ever don't describe someone right. My contacts only get me so far.
I forgot my glasses. Anyway, good afternoon. My name is Donna Gabriel. I live in Barn Hill Road, and I am an abutter to this project. My husband Gene and I have owned our home for 25 years. We appreciate how Chatham has kept our small-town character with the sensitivity to the building size and height. The proposed plan by the National Developer Penrose, Penrose, excuse me, will change our lives and the lives of our children forever. The proposed plan does not respect our privacy. The massing of two and a half stories, 30, 35 feet, whatever they have it at now, destroys our privacy and the quiet enjoyment of our home. The alternative plan seems to be reasonable. It respects the surrounding residents. The alternative plan also respects the developer's claim that 48 rental apartments are needed, and on this small historic west Chatham site will provide enough rental income for the developer to maintain and make a profit. We citizens and taxpayers of residents of Chatham expect the National Developer and local office to respect our claim and our single-family neighborhoods that will be protected and preserved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And please, go ahead. Ella Levitt, correct? And I like this on-deck theory, so the next person that was, yeah, I hope you do that. So, when the person is up there, you can feel free.
Yes.
Please go ahead.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Ella Levitt. I'm one of the many abutters to this project. And I feel I have to weigh in, as everyone else has, that we absolutely, I don't think there's anyone in this room who doesn't support affordable housing. It's the question, and the point is, how is it going to be done, and how is it going to affect the neighbors? I want to talk today about AI. Modern AI research is an invaluable tool for community planning. It's basically the collection of factual information. When asked to compare the Penrose plan with the alternative plan, AI responded, "The alternative plan creates a gracious setback, preserving neighbors' privacy and quiet. The Penrose plan hard edges the neighbors, reducing compatibility. The alternative plan minimizes hardscaping, making it greener and more environmentally sensitive. The alternative plan is more human-scale, promoting walkability, community interaction, and visual harmony." When asked about rear and side setbacks for apartment buildings adjacent single-family residential neighborhoods, AI responded, "For affordable housing under Chapter 40B, zoning boards often impose 40- to 50-foot buffer zones with dense landscaping between apartment buildings and abutting single-family homes. In towns like Chatham with strong interest in neighborhood character preservation, ZBAs may require 40- to 50-foot setbacks or more. This range is regarded as reasonable and defensible in 40B negotiations." When asked if parking in an affordable housing development can be limited, AI responded, "Developers often provide one space per unit in affordable housing. Chapter 40B developers may request zoning waivers for reduction in parking requirements." When asked if a community center was needed, AI responded, "If you already, if you are, excuse me, if you are already including a community green, then a small multipurpose room is likely sufficient." AI summed up the planning profession's standards for affordable housing development this way. "The alternative plan reflects community values while still providing affordable housing, striking a much healthier balance between development and neighborhood preservation. The goal of affordable housing should not come at the cost of undermining existing communities. The alternative plan shows that with thoughtful design, it is possible to meet housing needs while still respecting abutters and the integrity of the surrounding area." We hope you agree. Thank you.
Thank you. After these two people, we're going to take a short break, so, welcome.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. Carolyn McQuillan, South Chatham. I've been mulling over some of the points of disagreements regarding the Penrose Main Street development. As an affordable housing advocate, I'm keenly aware of the social contract that necessitates the fostering of mutual respect between all members in the community. I was very concerned about the neighbors' opinions being heard and considered. However, following the June 5th ZBA meeting, I was pleased to see that the developer did in fact listen to the concerns. I do feel that they've made enough modifications to the plan, such as reducing the overall height and footprint, as well as addressing lighting issues. I have driven down Jesse's Landing many times and considered the impact that they will experience, and I feel although they will be aware and able to see parts of the development, is it a reasonable amount of exposure? I would implore that whatever decision the ZBA makes, that they are consistent with other allowances that have made to other developers. As respect should be mutual, not only extended to the abutters, but also to include respect of the rights of the pending project, as well as the future residents who have homes there, we accept that we will be held to Chatham High standards for development, looking into how the town has considered and processed and allowed other types of sizable housing developments, such as subdivisions, should be reviewed for comparison. The idea that these buildings need to be unseen by all abutters is unreasonable, and not a standard that any other developer is held to. Specifically, Jesse's Landing, and also Hunter's Rise, these parcels were thickly forested, and they chose to clearcut every single tree, and now have an extremely narrow buffer zone on their side. Hunter's Rise in particular towers over their southern neighbor with a full three stories of exposure, with not a single buffer zone between them. These were choices that were made and allowed by this town. Obviously, the current Penrose proposal by comparison is extending a great deal of respect and consideration to their future neighbors. I'll also point out that in 2021, I shared with the community an interesting fact that Chatham had the worst housing record in the entire Cape. We had built seven homes, seven individual homes in the last 10 years, while all our neighbors had built considerably more. In that time since, we've built two more, so we're at nine, and we have one pending. We haven't hit double digits yet. All of our neighbors are well over 100, and some up to 200. Chatham is the worst, was the worst, and is still the worst on housing development. It is embarrassing. Without housing, this development for Penrose, we will have no hope of making any significant headway. And also, to speak a little bit to the quality of life for these residents, I just want to think, say that the cutting back of the community building, I don't agree with it all. I think there's a quality of life that these homeowners are entitled to. We're building huge, our abutters have 3,000, 4,000 square-foot homes. They're supposedly two or three, maybe four-bedroom homes. You have 48 homeowners in this parcel, and the fact that they could have a community building with unexercised room is not an unreasonable request. We have to think about their quality of life. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to point out, they're not homeowners. They're not homeowners, just out of fairness.
Okay, I'm sorry, renters. Tenants.
Yes. Okay, next.
Catherine Scherer, Jeanette Drive in Chatham. I am here to say I support affordable housing, and I support this development. We need rental housing in Chatham. We have very little year-round rental housing. I think Penrose has done an admirable job of creating a development that gives us affordable and attainable rental units in the space available, while taking into consideration, as best they can, the concerns of the neighbors. At first, I was intrigued by the alternative proposal, but when I looked at it more carefully today, I realized that, as Penrose has said, what they're proposing to do is create a series of apartments around a parking lot. I don't know about you, but I'd hate it. And the people who need this housing need comfortable places, and those of us who walk by it would not like to walk by a housing development around a parking lot, a housing development around a green space, with a road that the fire engines can get around, and some buffer for the abutting properties, I think is a reasonable compromise, and we should approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. So, now we're going to take a short break, and we will resume with any other comments. And, thank you. Okay, we are back. We are back. So this is Part II of the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting on July 17, 2025. And before we continue with comments from the audience, I just want to say that this would be the last meeting that we're going to have very generalized comments. We're going to probably continue this at the end of the day today to August 21, at which time we'll have our peer review regarding civil engineering and traffic. And we're going to focus our topic that day on civil engineering and traffic with Penrose. And all your comments will basically need to be focused on that topic. And there'll be probably three minutes. It depends. We decide how many minutes to give depending how many people are here. So it's never going to be more than five minutes or more than, actually, more than four minutes, but it could be two or three if it was, you know, flooded with people. So we decided on the spot, and I knew today would probably be three. So anyway, again, today's the last day for general opinions and because we are limited in time to get this done. So that is the reason. So next, please go ahead, sir. Just make sure you state your name, and you have three minutes, just like everybody else.
My name is Peter Swenson. I live at 1370 Main Street, and I own the property to the east of this project called the Chatham Motel. The motel is along the entire eastern border of the project. And our concern in the business is the size of the scope of the buildings that are being put up in relation to the height of the motel. It will be a wall of buildings, taking away from the fact that we're just a one-story motel, been there for a long time. And this would be what I would call uncharacteristic of the use of the property. So I'm here objecting to the, asking you not to forget the height requirement and consider that, and also the density of the project. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Catherine Halpern is next.
Thank you. My name is Catherine Halpern. My family has been resident of Chatham for 45 years. I'm a member of the Planning Board, formerly Chair and Vice Chair of the Planning Board. However, right now, I wish to speak as private citizen of Chatham and long-term resident of Chatham, Catherine Halpern. I don't really have any prepared points. I've been listening to everybody's feedback today and listening to your presentation. I just want to say that there's a lot of complex issues. I think the first thing we need to do is separate the issue of this specific design versus the issue of the need for affordable and attainable and moderately priced housing in Chatham. I agree with a previous speaker that there is no doubt that we need more affordable, attainable, and moderately priced housing in Chatham, especially for year-round residents. We need that, no doubt. The question I think that comes to bear is, is this design the best design to meet our needs? We want to put our money in the best design. And I just have to tell you, my professional experience and background that led me to be part of the Planning Board is I am a site plan and master plan designer. And I have heard what everyone said, and I just want to, I just have to say this, as a designer, I can guarantee that a design could be produced that does not require any compromise on anybody's part. I believe that we can design this so that all the requirements of Penrose are met, all the requirements of the 40B RFP are met, and all the concerns of the abutters and of the town community at large are also addressed adequately. I think it just needs a little time and attention. One thing that we always pay a lot of attention to in our processes are the concerns of abutters. We want this project not to be creating its own individual little community, but we want it to be part of the larger community of the town of Chatham. And to do that, I think we do need to pay attention to the neighbors' needs as well as the residents' needs. So, and I think that can be done.
Thank you. You're welcome. Next. Welcome.
Jackie Marselli, 32, Jesse's Landing. I know last time we met, we did, my husband and I submitted some pictures of the development in Eastham. And all I wanted to say today was, there were two words that stuck out when I went to see the project, and that was stark and screamed of affordable housing. And I don't believe that that's what we want here in Chatham. And I just spoke to the gentleman from Penrose, and he did indicate that that is a different development, although I will say, to me, the buildings look the same. The green space was but one piece of equipment and some sprigs, as I call them, and there was not one person there utilizing the space. So I would hope that whatever we choose here in Chatham, it is inviting, and it does not look like affordable housing. It's not fair to the people that'll be living there, and you certainly want it inviting for them to use the space that is there. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, sir. Please go ahead.
All right. Brian Phillips, Airport Commissioner. So speaking as an Airport Commissioner, the military frequently uses our airport for routine training exercises. The military uses our airport because it is one of the only, if not the only, airports that is dark enough to use its night vision equipment. As an Airport Commissioner, I have serious objections to the light pollution created by the high density in the lamps that will be on overnight. Seems like a pretty serious issue to me. And I also look into other stuff that the FAA has recommendations for. As a citizen, the structures are too big, way too dense, giving up way too many water rights to a for-profit corporation that will be needed for future projects in Chatham. The lights will have a detrimental effect on our circadian rhythm, way too much asphalt, which detrimentally affects drainage to our aquifers. And then a question to you guys is, how is $3,000 a month for a one-bedroom apartment affordable? This has the potential to reset the rental market in Chatham and make things less affordable. This AMI structure allows Penrose to take 30% of tenants' income regardless of how much they make, making essentially a license to steal. AMI does not allow for upward social mobility. If you make too much money, get kicked out. This type of project in a small town like Chatham promotes class separation, which there are only rich and poor, no middle class. This is in part due to the lack of affordable houses to buy. We had an offer on the table from HAC to have home ownership units for $150,000. We could have put people in houses for $150,000. This would achieve Chatham's goal of replenishing our middle class and freed up many rental units being used. It is very curious and disappointing to me why board members would go with a plan that is worth hundreds of millions of dollars to Penrose at the expense of Chatham taxpayers, our social structure, our infrastructure, and the potential for future projects. I request an alternative project be presented to the ZBA and will be referred to the Select Board for approval. In this project, I request tiny homes and/or cottages that are energy efficient and have low impact on the environment. I request as much green space and trees as possible that do not require fertilizer or irrigation. I request that these, this project includes home ownership and rent-to-own programs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Hi, I'm Debbie Finerty. I live at 28 Jesse's Landing. I just want to say that instead of finding fault with the alternate plan, we'd really appreciate Penrose understanding why we support an alternate plan. No one's saying that they don't agree with affordable and attainable housing, but please don't say you care about abutters when you obviously won't hear and listen to our concerns about density and crowding up against neighbors. All the praise that we hear is coming from people who don't have to live right up next to this project. I understand that time and money have been invested, but feel strongly it would be in everyone's best interest to revisit the abutters' concerns. I would implore the zoning board to ask Penrose to listen to the abutters and figure out how to better meet these, to meld these large structures into our neighborhood. I also want to say that I support fencing, as Rob Shawan previously mentioned. So thanks for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
Good afternoon, ZBA. Jeff Dykens, Member of the Select Board. I'm here to speak in favor of this project. I want to remind folks here that are attendance and online that the Select Board has voted favorably for this project. It's endorsed it. It's endorsed it all along. It's an excellent project. We have an extremely professional firm that is willing to develop this property so that we can provide 48 units of affordable housing here in the town of Chatham. You are in a tough spot because you have to balance the needs of, the overwhelming needs or overarching, I believe, needs of the need for affordable housing in town versus the needs of the abutters. And it's boiling down to that conflict, if you will, and you're in a tough spot. But I would like to argue here today that the needs for affordable housing, given the data that we heard from Morleons where they had 600 applicants for 62 spots, they had 600 applicants, the need is overwhelming. And I believe it's the ZBA's job, unfortunately, or fortunately now, to decide whether or not that is the overarching need for our town. We need kids in the schools. We have no kids in the schools. Our attendance has gone from, 28% to 23% of the kids in the Monmouth Regional School System are from Chatham. We need young families. We need kids. This is one way we can establish or have opportunity or offer opportunities for young families to have kids in this town. West Chatham is a perfect spot. It's near transportation. It's a perfect spot. It's a perfect spot. Let's not let this opportunity lag and be lost. Let's support it. Let's move forward. Let's not, let's not lose this opportunity as a town. Please support this proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next, please step up.
Hi, my name is Stephen Doyle, and I live at 25 Jesse's Landing. And I invite all of the zoning board to come to my house at any time and come to my backyard, look at the fence, go 17 feet, and then look for a building 30 feet high. And see, put yourself in my shoes to see if that's something, if you live there, that you would want. I'm not against affordable housing. I'm 100% for it. It just, as has been said before, time and time again, just to be done in a more acceptable way for everyone to agree with it. Thank you.
We go to all the sites, just to let you know. Absolutely. And we've been there. Who wants to go next? Anybody? No? Anybody online? Okay. And we just want to take the first question because I promised Steve Buckley to, that we would ask about the colors of the building. He asked about that. And we talked about crosswalk. I have those on my list to talk about, but just out of courtesy, can you just address the colors of the building? I know you sort of did in your memo, so he doesn't have that, perhaps.
Sure. I'll have Paul from Union address the colors.
Okay. Hi, it's Paul again. Colors by committee, that is a real challenge. And I think we, from the outset, we were very aware that this was going to be a topic of discussion, not only internally for Penrose and the design team when the time came to choose colors, when the construction begins, hopefully, but also with the general public and boards. And we were very intentional in proposing what we did, white siding with white trim, white windows with architectural detailing that reflect Greek revival, architectural style, which prevalent in Chatham and throughout Cape Cod. In the Historic Business District Commission Guidelines, Design Guidelines, Greek revival is defined as color similar to the Federal Palette were used for this period, and this was the first time that white was commonly used as a body color as well as trim color. It's predominant in Chatham. Chatham also has a lot of wood shingles, natural siding that weathers to be gray, so it's a muted color. And the Federal Palette refers to the Georgian Palette. And the Georgian Palette also talks about was the first time that muted colors, body colors included mud ochres, greenish grays, yellow ochre, light tones were used. That was in the early 1700s. But the post-1930 era, which we're in now, and defined and read in the guidelines, is for paintings of buildings built after 1930. The color should be appropriate for the style and form of the building and be comparable, compatible to the surrounding historic buildings. In general, siding should be unpainted wood shingles or clambered painted white. Trim should be painted white. Window sashes should be either black or white, but not wider than the white window trim. Doors should be dark in color, such as dark green, red, or black. That's exactly what we're proposing. So to introduce an array of colors into a development or neighborhood, we have to be very careful about what that palette is. And opening it up to a conversation of color by committee, we may end up, and nobody wants this, Storyland or Christmas tree shop development on Route 1 north of Boston. So we're very aware of it, and we were very intentional in the palette we chose with the architectural detailing that we know we can pull off.
Thank you. So I do acknowledge that Steve Buckley has his hand raised, but unfortunately, this is not a back and forth, so we're not going to acknowledge Mr. Buckley as to that. But I'm going to get more into that when it's my turn. So this is your time for rebuttal for the letters and for what you've heard from the audience. Go right ahead.
The only thing I wanted to maybe address to start, because we welcome your questions and the back and forth, you mentioned crosswalks. You raised the other question, so happy to address that. As we mentioned during our presentation, Traffic Engineer does not believe that this project would meet the DOT warrants for crosswalk. However, if the board is so inclined, we are happy to, as part of a decision, reach out to DOT, ask them if they would approve a crosswalk at this location. If they do, the applicant would build it. However, if they refuse it and turn it down, then that would no longer be a condition that would be an impediment to the decision. So happy to ask and happy to go either way, but it would have to be up to what DOT, they have the control of the road.
So can you just, you know, we have that in our memo on, I want to say, page six or something. So just tell the audience what this button is, what you're talking about. Yeah, you have it, we have it on, in your memo, page six, paragraph, it's at the top, installation, I'll just read it.
Yeah, yeah.
Industrial actuated rectangular rapid flashing beacon. And it could be advanced, again, subject to mass DOT review and approval. So is that what you were going to say?
Yes, yeah, I just got a copy of that. Yeah, so we're happy to do, we'll ask, and if they approve it, that's fine. We just wouldn't want it to be a condition that the project couldn't go forward if DOT says no.
So maybe you, that could be on your list of things to come back to us at the next meeting if that works for you, you know, to see about that.
Well, we can ask DOT. I don't know if we'll get an answer that quick, but we're happy to ask.
But you could promise to try to, you know, get the ball rolling on that. Okay, so is there anything else you want to say now before we hear from our board?
No, thank you.
No? Okay. So Ginny, take it from the top.
Questions?
Comments, questions?
Okay, let me start with questions. So, Mr. Singer, does the, there was a lot of discussion in the alternative plan about the one-way. So, Mr. Singer, does the, there was a lot of discussion in the alternative plan about the one-way. Is, does that not meet the fire departments? I mean, was that a definitive, like, no, it does not meet it, or the fire department would recommend not doing that?
Let me answer one part and then turn over Joe for the other. One response is that the fire department is very clear that they want, you know, they need a minimum of 17 and .6 feet, and that just gets them to the edge of the edge. So, the 20 feet, is that what you proposed, 20?
Yeah, I just said 20 feet.
Yeah. So, the 20 feet meets, whether it's one-way, two-way, or three-way, you need the width. That's, for the fire department, the key thing is the width to be able to make the turns, put the-
And that was 20 feet.
Minimum 20 feet, but we're proposing 24 for two-way traffic.
Okay, that's good to know. Mr. Singer, in your summary that you wrote up, I don't know if it was, if I missed something or if it was a mistake, but you referenced on page eight, reducing heights of all eight residential buildings. And then you referenced a couple times, you know, five and three. So, you say-
I made a mistake.
Okay.
I forgot a building. It's, I thought there were nine buildings. There were 10 buildings. So, there were nine residential buildings. One management building. Of the nine residential buildings, three of them now comply under 30 feet. Six of them request that variation, if you have the table. That was my mistake. I apologize.
Well, no, it was interesting because, actually, Sarah, if you can push this up a little bit, or any of the renderings of the, the setbacks for the neighbors is really important. That has come up over and over again. And one of the thoughts that I had, that I'm kind of jumping around here, this isn't a question, it's a comment, the back part of the property, which is Jesse's Landing and the neighbors to the west in particular, although we also have the gentleman who's on the east side with the motel. If you did change the number of buildings, so one of my questions is going to be, how many units must you have? Because if the bottom four buildings were changed to three, which would then be your three and five, which would be eight, they could come in a little bit, which would be less mass to Jesse's Landing. And it would be a compromise. It would be something that the west side and the east side could benefit from. So, that's why I just thought your error was actually like, we were telegraphing, like, oh, maybe that's what he means. I have to ask about that.
That was not what I meant.
So, one of my related questions then is, you know, the density is, first of all, let me back up. Everyone is, I have not read or heard a single person that is not in favor of affordable housing. But yet, we've had our third hearing and there are multiple comments about the problems with this one because of it being in the neighborhood. And that's going to be the same scenario in any neighborhood. So, we are at, you know, one of the things you mentioned, Mr. Singer, at the beginning of your, was balance. Okay? We can't have maximum density and then still be able to accommodate abutters issues, at least in this proposal. So, I just thought that that was one of the ways of trying to reduce some density. We got rid of one of the buildings at the back, which is C Building, which has six units in it, to go from 48 to 42. My question would be, and maybe you can't answer it tonight, but the question would be, is that financially viable for you?
So, I think that's, the answer to that question is really to how we approach managing these properties. Because we have, our commitment is to have full-time onsite property management. Normally, our lower limit for the number of units for one property, because we want that property manager sitting there, is 60 units. We're already way below that because we kind of thought that this was a kind of the density that the site could reasonably support and meet all the required setbacks by, on the side and rear yard. So, we know, we really wanted to kind of be close, as close to that 60 unit as possible. And we're already way, way below that to help support that full-time property manager that we really want onsite.
I understand that. I appreciate it. I think balance is now coming back into the equation where maybe that's not possible. There's only three acres here and it is surrounded by abutters that have been very vocal. And everyone wants the project to work, but I felt as though maybe that one building, removing that would, I'm not going to pretend it solves the problem for the abutters, but it could ease it a little bit, and that would be three. Three sides could benefit from that. So, I just throw that out as an idea. Okay. And then I have some questions and comments about trees. Okay. Is that for Mark? Okay.
Yeah.
So, Mark, in your proposal, if we want to put up one of the tree, the landscape, the Friends of Trees, you read, you heard their letter. And I have been to that property and I counted some of the orange tags. And it looks on your proposal, it's a little hard to tell, but it looked to me as though this isn't the one. But there's one where it shows, where you have diagrammed what an existing tree is, and it looks like it does not have a black circle around it. And then everything else that has a black circle is a new tree. Is that a fair understanding of your?
Yes, so on this plan that's being shown, all of the trees with the green or colored fills are new proposed trees. And the ones that have no fill are existing trees that are being preserved.
So, the circles that are just circles along the perimeter, and they represent approximately the size of the tree?
That's correct.
Okay, so then in the center of the, so that's the perimeter. In the center of the property, we're talking about 1, 2, 3, 4 with a cluster. I'm not talking about the little cluster, but 1, 2, 3, and then the big one, four trees.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you for clarifying that. I don't know if tonight you want to go through where I stand on some of these things. Is that helpful, to have a summary of?
You could talk about what conditions you're thinking about?
Well, let me add one more thing about architecture. That's Paul. These comments I'm making, they're not big things. They're really what I would call tweaks, but it's in an effort to absorb what we've heard in here in 1, 2, and now 3. And then I keep latching on to Mr. Singer's comment about trying to reach balance. So, I happen to agree with you about the non-colors. I like the white and the cedar shake. These designs are absolutely, they're fine, but they don't really, and I know that you went through the elements with the divided lights and the clapboards and all that, pulling different homes around Chatham. So, I, but the buildings themselves, they really could be anywhere. They don't, and they are on Main Street, Chatham, and the HBDC district. And I think with short money, it's not my money, it's your money, so I say that, but with a few tweaks to the, perhaps you could bring in some more Chatham elements to it. For example, the rendering that shows this house.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
If, can we go to that, Sarah? So, that's not, I think that's the C Building. Yeah, that one there. So, I think to the right, the peak, to the right, C Word has that, I think that's called a headboard across on the top of that window. Is that right?
Head casing.
Head casing, okay. If that, for example, and in other instances, if that could be a little bit of a beefier headboard, you know, there's a little more prominent. And then, not all the buildings are Cs, but it would be great if, you know, the building that's been referred to several times, the Fishing Alliance Building?
Yes.
Okay. The one that's 35 feet tall. You notice how in the peaks, it has some of this patterned shingling? And I know that's very specialized, but we're only talking about a very small space. And I'm just using this as an example. I'm not saying it has to be that, but something like that. That would make it a little more unique to Chatham, because you do see that type of shingling, whether it's the fishtail or it's the diamond shingling, and it would just be, you know, in a little area like that, not throughout. So, if there were three C Buildings, because we've removed one, you're only talking about that. Maybe there are a couple other areas.
We haven't removed one yet.
Well, okay, I'm just, but you see what I mean? I think that's an example.
And to say, I don't think we're going to, just to be upfront about that, but turn it back to on the shingling.
And again, I know I'm getting like really granular, but I'm trying to give you some of the thoughts that I had about what, I don't dislike the buildings, but I think that we could like them a little better. They are going to be on Main Street and part of HBDC. So, that was an idea. I do appreciate that you have the Eves and the Returns, but any places like that where, without it being a super costly endeavor, if it could be, and that head casing was one, is that right, head casing?
Yeah.
That was just one example where it could be.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks for your input.
Okay, so that was the comment about, now, let me just get back to the trees for a second. I think the trees are probably one of the most important things that is going to complement the architecture and help with the abutters' concerns for privacy. So, I really think that the trees are going to be my biggest area of focus going forward. I would like to see more trees preserved that are on that property. One of the comments that was made, I forget which property it was, was that things were clear-cut. And then you're planting new trees, but you cannot replace some of those really mature trees that are on that property. It may require a little shifting of design, but it's so important for the perimeter and for, I think, just the aesthetic of the whole property as you're driving down Main Street, 28. To see these really established trees, it will add so much character to that and it won't look like a brand-new development, I think, as much as it maybe looks to others when they look at some of the other renderings. So, maybe I'll stop there with.
Paul, what say you?
Well, I would, I need some more information and I'm going to ask a few questions as we go forward here. But one of the things that we've talked about is, we're talking about a lot of units and bedrooms and so forth. How many people do you expect to be living in this facility?
Well, I mean, the quick answer would be, you know, three folks in the three bedrooms and two persons in the two bedrooms and one person in one bedroom. But it varies a little bit because there's all different types of households. So, I don't have-
Can you do that math for us, if you would?
I assume that, I assume that you're not looking for a quick answer here, but rather, I'm looking for a considered answer, given the fact that you people have the expertise. What I'm thinking about here is, in this unit, in this production, you're going to have a number of people, and I assume that there would be a mix of adults and children. And what would that be, given that we're also looking at parking and we're looking at financial restrictions that need to work, given that you are working with, you've got seven units at 30% of AMI? So, can you give us some more information about what the people are going to be? And how many they're going to be, so that we can get a better feel for what the density is in terms of population?
Sure. I feel that Village Anasa Green in Eastham is a great analog for this project. They have 65 units there, but it's the same type of unit mix in terms of percentages of three bedrooms and percentages of two bedrooms, which follows the HLC guidelines. And so, I don't have those numbers handy on me, but we could get them and provide them to the board about what the current mix and number of residents are there. I do actually have the parking on the top of my head there. At Village Anasa Green, our parking ratio is 1.55 spaces per unit. And a lot of them aren't being used. As of a month ago, I believe, there were 75 parking passes for residents. So, that's around like a, was it 1.1 cars per unit?
Do your leases specify the number of parking spaces that a tenant has?
No, we don't assign parking spaces because it's less efficient. You end up having unused parking spaces for a certain amount of time and people tend to come and leave the property at different times. You get better use and therefore you need less spaces with unassigned spaces. But we do give stickers, so when people sign their leases, they know, they have their car registered and we know that car belongs in, on the property. Not having a specific space to drive in, though.
Okay. And the, so there's no restriction on the number of cars that a tenant can have, other than the fact that you issue a permit for them?
Well, I don't know the answer to that specifically. I believe there probably is. I've never heard of that being an issue of a resident having too many cars. But we can follow up and get more information if, from, you know, Village Anasa Green, where it's not the case. But we can ask if they, if we, if at there, there is a limit in the lease of vehicles.
Okay. I think if you provide that information, that would be very helpful in making some of the collateral decisions that we have to make here. And give us an idea of what the place is going to look like when it's actively engaged with people.
Can I add a little bit to that? I think as a resident signs up, we know that they have a car. So, the property manager is there every day and they are managing and assessing the situation. And our typical approach is that people get their parking passes. We know how many cars are going to be onsite. And we don't kind of actively manage it until it becomes an issue. And unless it's a site in an urban area where we might only have five parking spaces on a development like this, we don't, based on our experience with Eastham and other properties in the region, we don't anticipate this being an issue.
Okay. You've talked about the common building and the fact that the space has been reduced, given some comments that we've made. You're currently thinking in terms of Meeting House Road property as well. Do you have any concept of perhaps combining the functions that would come from a common location so that you can use one for both locations?
We had entertained that. But as they're currently designed, and Meeting House is not as designed as this, we have created space on the Meeting House property, so it'd be sufficient to be self-managed on its own.
I think, right now, we have this property, this application in front of you, and Meeting House has not been submitted yet. It has not been approved yet. At this point, it is still, and financing may not be exactly at the same time. So, we have to be prepared in that situation where we set this property up for success, where if that, there's no guarantees with any development. So, at this point, we have to design them separately. But we, and because of the distance between the two properties and talking to our affiliated property management company, it's really hard for one property manager to go from one site to another. And it's, maybe a resident will go from this site to the other site for an amenity, but most likely, we don't see that happen very often, where you drive a few miles for amenities on another site.
Is the common, is the common building designed to provide support services for the people that are in the units here?
Yes. Yes, we have a specific office set aside for what we call our Impact Coordinators, which is a resident services, which is not the property manager or leasing agent.
So, presumably, those impact services would also be present in Meeting House, among other things. Or for that matter, they're present at Lake Street.
Yes. And that actually is a position that does get shared among properties in close proximity because it's difficult for- proximity, because it's difficult for individual property to support that extra staff member. And usually, at a property of this size, a full-time really isn't needed. So that would be one position that could potentially be shared between these two, and also with our Fair project in Orleans. Actually, Fair in Orleans, I believe, is sharing some hours with the impact coordinator at Village Anasa Green.
All right. One of the concerns that I have is, is the streetscape and how that's affected by the, by the development. That depends in part on where the taller buildings are, where they are not, and the relationship to the other buildings around that. We often, in our hearings on individual homes that are being considered, are presented with a graphic, in effect, a 3D view from helicopter, going around the properties and showing the relationship to neighboring properties and vegetation. And I'm wondering whether you would consider doing that kind of a video presentation that would enable us then to assess the buildings as you're proposing them, with the houses that are directly around there and the buildings, Duncan Donuts or the Chatham Motel, so that we can get a feel for what this actually would look like when it's done.
Sure, that's an interesting idea. I'm not sure whether or not the capable, because I, the capabilities are there to do that, so I don't want to commit to that.
I think the question is, you're looking for a 3D, basically a Sims model of the entire site.
Yes, yes, and including the immediate neighboring property, so that we can see what the impact is from, from what we see. I mean, that kind of software seems to exist in terms of some of the home projects that we look at elsewhere in town.
I think for one building, it would definitely be feasible if we're proposing one large building, but I guess with a site like this, that's, you're building a whole model, like a whole, a whole, like neighborhood. So that, we can talk about it, but it seems like, to me, if we were building one apartment building here, we would be able to do that for you, but when you're looking at a whole neighborhood, it's like building a Sims model, which is pretty involved, and I don't think it's something that we are going to be able to do.
This is Paul. It is possible. It's a matter of how extensive that model and that rendering is going to be. I mean, you can do a very complicated, very detailed, fly-through, anything can be done, or you can do something very simple, a massing model. So I think that's something that the team, we could talk about, to see what might be appropriate to address that concern.
Okay, I think that would be, that would be helpful, and you certainly have heard the concerns that have been expressed in terms of height and density, vis-à-vis the balance of the neighborhood, and that can give you some guidance as to what we're looking for. Just a quick question, how many of these units will be handicap accessible and how many visual or hearing impaired accessible?
There are building code requirements to that, which we meet, I forget the exact percentage. We haven't gotten to the point where we've actually identified them on the floor plans, although I believe we, we've identified which buildings would be able to have the access to the accessible parking spaces.
To further answer that question, all of the ground floor units will be accessible per mass accessibility code.
Okay, thank you. I think that may be the extent of the questions that I have at this point, in addition to the information that you've already provided. If I think of more, I'll let you know. Thank you.
Okay.
A couple of questions. I don't believe there's any conservation issues with the site. And I know you're, you've proposed pretty much native trees along the Butters line, but I think the neighbors might be happier with trees that perhaps grow faster and perhaps are not native, like Leland Cypress comes to my mind, to prevent a better screening in that area. It's maybe not politically correct, but if you're trying to, you know, prevent, provide some screening to the neighbors, maybe a tree that grows two feet a year would be, would be better.
So we've chosen a palette that is fully native, which I believe is in support of the RFP, and trees that are suitable to the site and the Cape. We can explore alternatives, but we feel that what has been proposed does provide adequate screening.
As a landscape architect, if you had no restrictions to the type of tree there, what would provide the best screening possible?
Well, one of the trees that we are proposing, the evergreen tree, the American Holly, is a very dense tree and is one of the best screening trees that we use on projects that don't require natives. And it also is a question to what kind of screening, because there's, you can take the tact of building a green wall, which sometimes calls more attention to the fact that there's something behind it. And we've included the American Hollies in places where we've thought we need the extra level of screening. And then there's a mix of deciduous and flowering trees that will provide more screening throughout the year. And so the variation helps to break up that green wall effect and not have you looking to what's behind it. So that's our approach, and it's typical of what we would do on projects like this.
My next question, the community building. So it's obvious the Cape, and in particular, Chatham, has an issue with affordable units. That building, if that wasn't a community building and it was a building for residents, how many additional units could you, could there be built there? Six, eight?
Yeah, I mean, there could be more units there, but then we wouldn't have the ability to manage them effectively. And so, I mean, we feel very strongly that what we're having here, I mean, it's similar to like, sometimes, I make the comparison, it's, you know, like having a restaurant, but then saying, well, how many more tables could you fit if you got rid of the kitchen? Probably more tables, but we wouldn't be able to serve. And so that space is maintenance space, maintenance storage space, the workshop, it's a conference room to meet with new residents and applicants, it's the property manager's office, it's what we call the community room, which is like the function room and the heart of the neighborhood and the community. And that's been designed, that's been built, or it had been designed by our Penrose Design Standards, which is all our sort of learning lessons on how to manage and build these properties that we've developed over the past 50 years, over 50 years, 350 different developments. We've come up with this design standards for new developments with, you know, based in certain regions and the type of development. And that's, space was actually given to Union Studios, the specs, like this is what we need from the input from management folks on how to effectively manage this site. So I'm sure we could add more units, but that's something we can't remove from, from the development.
If I might just follow up, because I hear a trend with several of the questions, and it comes back to what I talked about at the beginning, and you mentioned it about, you know, about the balance and what I said about competing interests. If you look at what you're struggling with, you've got, you've heard the following comments this afternoon, have 50-foot buffers from the neighbors, push the buildings further back from Route 28, don't cut any trees. They're all competing, you know, we can't do everything. When you're looking at a project like this, you know, as you said, could you move this or that? You know, a management building, as you've heard from Penrose, is very important, and the design, as they're proposing it, to have that neighborhood feel is very important. All of the buildings comply with the side setbacks of the zoning bylaw, so no waivers are being requested for side or rear setbacks. There is already waivers being requested for the front setback, as you can see the property line that curves across the front there. And several of the buildings, you know, do comply with height. And so again, it's the struggle that I see you, you know, undertaking as well, which is, how do we, how can we satisfy as much as possible? You're never going to satisfy everybody, but how can you do, in order to provide this housing in a safe, effective, and desirable manner, what can you do that might work? And we're going to give you more answers on certain things, obviously, to the questions we're hearing, but I just wanted to point that out again, because I just hear the tension as, as the questions keep coming.
And maybe I should point out, I'm not suggesting you reduce the number of units. I'm suggesting you have a landscape company, you outsource all of that, and Chatham gets more units, which is what we need, and not a community building, which we, I know would be nice for the residents, but Chatham needs more affordable units, and that's what I would like to see.
Okay, so David Veach, you're up.
Well, actually, so, I mean, I'll start with, I just have one question, and that I, something, something triggered this thought earlier, and I started wondering about the placement of mechanicals on the, on the property, generators, air conditioning units, and things, because we deal with this all the time, because Chatham has a bylaw that, that covers that. And so I'm just wondering if there's thought been given to that, and, and that at least as far as you are, so far, you're not seeking waivers from setbacks with regard to that, those units, or those, those pieces of equipment, exterior mechanical equipment, yeah.
We haven't gotten to the level of detail of the mechanicals, but we are knowledgeable about that, and we know that we can put the mechanicals into the setback.
Okay.
So if there are, like, the condensers, if they would be ground-mounted, they would be screened and off, and not in the setbacks.
Okay, I just, it just, you know, I went, wow, we haven't heard about that, and maybe they haven't addressed it yet, but it sounds like you're, yeah.
Thank you.
We're going to give you an update. Paul, just so you and Penrose is aware, at this year's annual town meeting, there was an amendment to the zoning bylaw, which we're waiting to hear back from the AG on, regarding exterior mechanicals, where it's not at ground level anymore, it's anywhere within the setback, needs to, they need to meet road, a butter, and conservancy district setback, except by special permit through the Board of Appeals.
Okay, thank you. And when we get to that point, if that, just to follow the legal part of that, if that required another waiver request for one or more, we'd have to add that, but we haven't at this point.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So then, I, I'm feeling kind of lonely, because I'm hearing much discussion with respect to the, the community building, or whatever we want to call it. I've even heard some speculation that's probably not a good name to call it in Chatham for one reason or another. But, and I've seen some of the, and I'm, I just want to continue to express that I think that that's, I'm trying to think about the people who are going to live here. And I want to commend you for designing for what life is going to be like in this space, and having a community of building to do the work you need to do. I'm, in a way, I'm sorry to see the fitness room go, but I do, I think that, you know, in conjunction with that, a little bit of a reduced waiver of the setback in the front is probably a good thing, but I'm, I'm not in favor of reducing. I don't want to, I don't want to see us or the town, in order to try to do balancing here, I really don't want to see us start chipping away at the amenities that you're providing for the people that are going to live there. So I just need to say that, and, and I want to commend you for, and I feel like the design that you have presented to us, and with some tweaks here and there, it looks very much to me like it is designed to satisfy the needs of the people who are going to be living there. Because these people are people, are, they're going to be people that are working here in this town and surrounding towns, and working for the town, et cetera. And we owe them the best that we can give them. And so I, I need to say that, and I don't want us to keep chipping away because we're trying to satisfy some of the other, the competing interests that keep being expressed to us. And maybe we feel like, well, we need to do this, and, you know, that, and then, and then as far as the, you know, seeking, pushing us to maybe say, well, you need to give a better, you know, more than setbacks, or greater setbacks than, than what the zone currently allows, I'm not inclined to be even discussing that, honestly. Because I think that this, I mean, I have maybe more faith in some of the professional work that's gone into this, and some of the previous decisions that have been made with respect to it by, by the Board of Selectment and Affordable Housing Trust, et cetera. And, you know, I think that there's been, a lot has gone into this, and it's, I'm keeping in mind that this is, this is sponsored by the town. This proposal is sponsored by the town. And I do believe that, and the other thing I just want to say, that in reading through the material that our town council given us about explanations about 40B and being a balancing, it seems to me, I've seen the statement several times, that density is pretty much not on the table to, to try to adjust in a project like this. So I don't think I have anything else at this point.
Okay, thank you. So Lee, and then Steve, and then me.
Okay, well, I have a question regarding the R20 zone. We are in the R20 zone, and the setback is 15 feet, and these all meet them, I believe. It's kind of hard to see. I see the one in the southeast corner is at 17.7. And the other ones, I'm assuming, are the same. I don't see any direction, you know, any.
Sue was going to clarify that.
So, yes, the closest one to the southerly of butter is 17.7. All of the other ones, I scaled it, it's about 18 or more feet for all of the other rear buildings.
So, so they're meeting those?
Correct. It's only required 15.
Is it different, since it is a, not a resident, I mean, it is residential, but is it different?
No.
Because of the project? No, it is, that, those are the setbacks. Okay. That was my first question. I, I actually do want to talk about the community center for just a minute. I, I have to say that the letter from Tracy Cannon changed my opinion on the community center. I think some good modifications have been made, and I believe that it's more appropriate now, and I, I trust her judgment, she has a lot of experience in this area, and I, I agree with her. I think it's going to be a huge benefit to this project. I think it's going to be a huge benefit to this project. I also happen to be a fan of fencing, and I don't think it would send the wrong message, as some people have said. I think, along with the planting, that would create a nice buffer and a nice privacy. A fence, I don't think would hurt. So those are my thoughts on that. I do have a question regarding the, as Paul mentioned, the number of people that perhaps may be living here. You spoke about your project in Orleans, and that you had 600 applicants. And I'm curious as to, and you don't have to tell me this now, but I'm curious as to whether or not you can get the data as to how many people actually are living there as of now, or may be living there. So those are my, those are my thoughts.
Steve?
Well, first of all, I want to just thank you for explaining things from your perspective a little bit better, maybe going into a little bit more detail. So I, you know, I understand things from your side of the fence a little bit better than I did before. So I thank you for going into a little bit more detail. I have a couple of questions. I'm going to try to rank these in order of difficulty, so I'll do the best I can with that. I was going to ask about the crosswalks. I actually see them on the site, on the site plans. I see cuts going across, saw cuts and pavement patches going across 28.
That was actually for the water piping. That's for utilities.
Oh, that's not a walkway.
It's not a walkway. That's just the saw cut where the utilities would be going in. But that's presumably when we ask DOT, that's where we would ask.
All right. The admin building, or the community building, I think, I think what you, the adjustments that you made are good, but I'd like to maybe see you put a little more effort into making that look a little bit better. Maybe some dormers on the roof, maybe make that look a little bit less commercial. You could even put some skylights under the dormers to make them natural.
Take a look at that.
Okay, thank you. See, not difficult. I think in part of your presentation, you said that there was going to be 24/7 management.
So the property manager will be there during normal business hours, so Monday to Friday, nine to five. The maintenance person will be there, same normal business hours, but they will be on 24/7. Like, if something happens overnight, a toilet kind of has an issue, if it's, for all emergencies, our maintenance person is on call to help address those issues immediately.
So there's no sleeping quarters or anything for a property manager?
No.
Okay. I didn't hear anybody talk about any kind of solar energy. A lot of these buildings are rear, are south-facing, at least the rear of the buildings are south-facing.
This is Paul again. We've designed the buildings and the roofs to accommodate solar panels, so they, at least they'll be solar-ready and prepared for it. And then it's, I think it's a question for Penrose to get the financing together and implement that.
Okay, but it's on the radar?
Yes, oh, absolutely.
On this particular project, and I have to go back and look at the LDA, but I believe there may be, it's more than just being solar-ready on this project, there may be planned steps for actual installation in the future. There will be.
And I guess I want to elaborate a little bit more on the, something we said early in our presentation is that these are designed to meet passive house requirements. And for those who aren't familiar with it, it's actually the design of the building to create the insulation necessary, so that there isn't very little airflow between outside and inside, so that when you turn on the AC during, during your day, close the door, leave, turn off the AC, and you come back, it's still, it's still very cool inside afterwards, because the insulation overall for the building is kind of to a level that it means that you're not having to spend as much money on electricity to heat or cool the apartment. So we have had a lot of tenants who have had lower utility bills, and we all know electricity bills, these are all electric buildings, because that's what we have to build to nowadays. Electric rates are really high, and one of our commitments to the quality of life for the residents is also, hopefully with these above code-required energy requirements that we're meeting, that it will lead to lower utility bills for the residents also.
And then I think the last one I was going to ask, which is probably the most difficult, and I realize it might take a tremendous amount of reconfiguration, but was there any consideration of putting the loop road around the back of the buildings? So kind of swapping the road with the buildings, and moving the buildings inward and the roadway outward?
Sorry, this is Paul again. Early, early on, before the RFP response was submitted, we probably, we did a lot of iterative design processes, so, but that was never presented at any point in time to the public, or the board, or the RFP, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, so I like to lather before I shave, not that I shave, but, all right. So I, too, am in favor of the Tracy Cannon concept, let's call it the Cannon concept, and I give up on the community center. I noted that you had made it smaller, and, but I just do want to say that a member that talked about that, he wasn't trying to take away anything from residents, he was trying to add more, add more units. And so, you know, that is not the same as trying to say, oh, they don't need that, because this is about affordable housing, so I commend that, and I would rather see more units there. So, and I don't think any of us have really gone on any bandwagon to get rid of units at all. We're not really asking that. So, all right, so I'm not going to say anything about the community center. I've also given up on the height. You've made some changes, and I'm not going to talk about how I wish you wouldn't have a building that's four feet over, but I'll get to some points about that location in a moment, and what you might want to do. I appreciate the crossing button, and I would, if we don't get answers from the, is it the DOT? If we don't, I would like to consider conditioning that, and if you can't do it, at the end of the day, then you can't do it, but that it should be conditioned, that there'd be some kind of crossing button. But we don't have to decide any of that today. We're not near, we're not, we're not there yet, but I'm just throwing that out there, that I'm not giving up on that, and I'm sure some other members aren't either. Okay, so I also appreciate the open-mindedness with regard to the HBDC colors, but you know what I'm wondering is, when we gave you the HBDC design guidelines right at the beginning of the meeting, how do you characterize these buildings? Because we thought, at least Sarah and I thought, that maybe they were colonial revivals, but you were talking about Greek revivals, and then you went into a few different things, and, you know, and there's different color palettes for each one. So can you pick what you think this is most like, or do you think it's a hybrid, or, and you don't have to necessarily answer me now, but if you want to, you can.
I could, and I think I did earlier, that it was Greek revival.
So that's what you think?
Yeah, and, but we're open to incorporating some of the Georgian color palettes, which are the muted, natural colors that aren't the bright, bold of some colonial and other historical colors, but much more muted, so.
And so, so maybe it's, at a future meeting, we could sort of come to, you know, an agreement on that and condition it, you know? Because we don't want to leave it in the breeze, like, yeah, we'll consider this HBDC thing, yeah, sure. We want to actually condition it, and so I want to talk about that at another meeting, so that we can agree on something that this board would vote on with regard to color. So I just want to throw that out there, you know, and it seems like you're flexible about it.
We are.
We're not trying to look like Disneyland or anything, like you said, we're not. I mean, you know, okay, so that was that. Now, now I'm going to get into something that I think is a little bit complicated, at least for me it is. So the fire department talked about, and Sarah's going to put something up on the screen, he talked about a safe turning radius, especially in front of Building 3. So we don't want to play with fire here, obviously, and we don't want to jeopardize the safety of the people that they wouldn't be able to get to potentially. You know, this is not, this is not funny. So we want to make sure that we're not relying on people to know how to park correctly in order for the fire truck to be able to get by and put out a fire on buildings like 4, 5, and 6, or whatever that is. So I want to just throw out the concept of eliminating that space, or whatever spaces you need to eliminate, because you came in thinking maybe 1.3 is reasonable, and then you went up to 1.7, but I'd like to see you go back down. By everything I've heard, I would like to see you at least consider going back down in order to take out some of the hardscape, and absolutely make sure that there's no question whatsoever that a fire truck can put out fires in these buildings. Sarah, is there any?
Sure, I can address that. The slide that I included in the presentation, I actually was, I clipped a more recent version of our fire turning plan that showed that we can meet that, the requirement that the fireman was talking about. So see this, if you compare this plan, as I mentioned, there's some nuance in this. This is, you actually are driving the truck through the development. So if you look kind of by the crosswalk, there's quite a bit of room there, where between the truck and the edge of the curbs lines, right? So what we did was, we just went back and re-drove the truck through the development, and we, you know, stayed away from those parking spaces. So because we're so, you know, we have enough width, where we're not stuck right on, you know, a certain path is all we can drive. So we went in and adjusted it based on his comment, and as you can see there, I have a pointer here, I guess.
You already did that when you saw it?
Yeah, we already did that, that's what I'm trying to say. We did it, and we incorporated it, and I hadn't had a chance to send it to the fire chief yet.
Right, right, yeah, okay. But I would want him to take another look at that, still.
Of course, yeah.
And still, let's just go back to the issue of parking a little bit, to try to, like, if you did go down to maybe 1.4 or 1.5, you think you could push the buildings over away from the abutter, like the Leavitt, I'm just going to say it, that's the Leavitt side, because, and I'm going to get to something that we might be able to do with the back in a moment, because, yeah, you meet the setback, the measly little 15-foot setback, but do you think when the Leavitts bought that, or anybody bought property around there, they thought tall buildings were going to be next to it? So maybe you meet the setbacks, but maybe it's just fundamentally immoral to go ahead and put tall buildings so close. So anything you could do to try to ameliorate that would be great.
So I think overall, we're not big into parking either, so you're reading my mind, and we have already started looking at what a balance might be, and seeing what we could potentially do if we reduce some parking spaces.
That's great, so we could talk about that next time. And also, I'm a big fan of everybody having a space that, you know, again, we're talking about quality of life, and if I was going to rent somewhere, and God, I haven't had a rent in a long time, but I want a space, for God's sakes, you know? I wouldn't want to wonder if I'm getting home from work at, you know, for a second shift or something, I get to drive around and park far, and then I'm personally afraid of parking lots at night. So, yeah, I think that you should at least consider everybody getting one spot allotted, at least if they want it. Okay, so that's, that's another thing. So let's see, now, the back, I guess they're buildings four through seven, that's another, you know, I understand you meet, that's the 17-foot, you know, essentially. And what about the idea of just pushing them up an amount, maybe three to five feet, so that you could put more evergreens in, and have enough space to be able to take care of them properly? So that would be a buffer for, I know you don't want to put a fence, and quite frankly, the people that live over there, you know, in these properties, they could put a fence. You know, if you pay $3.5 million for a home, you probably can afford a fence. So I'm going to take this, that side on that. But I do think that you should move the, those tall buildings in, whatever amount you can possibly do, and keep it safe, get rid of some spaces, and put evergreens there. So I'm trying to get, like, you know, more technical now, so, you know, I know this is our third hearing, and, you know, so those are my thoughts. Don't know if I have any more. Let's see, oh, yeah, one more question. That Orleans location, did you use local preference there? Just wondering.
Yes, we did, to the maximum that the state HLC allowed, which is 70%. And the way we handled the preference on Orleans was, there was actually two local preferences. There was one just for the town of Orleans, and then there was a separate, what we're calling, what we called a regional preference, four towns that had contributed CPC funds to the, to that specific project. And there were seven other towns outside of Orleans that contributed. So what it ended up being was, I think, 63% local preference for people who live, work, or children that go to school, that's what kind of defines the preference, live, work, or children that go to that school system. 63% for Orleans, and then 7% for the regional, and that got us to the full 70% that the state allows. And however, that is just for lease-up. That is not an ongoing preference. They only allow it for the initial lease-up.
Okay, all right. So does anybody else have anything that they want to add or comment on? David, your mouth is moving.
Just, Randy, just in, to your comment about the buildings, which maybe, maybe there is some room to move them all, but I just keep in mind that, you know, Chatham's R-20 zone presupposes 15-foot setbacks to the property line, and a height of 30 feet. So now, there are a few, couple of buildings back there that do exceed the 30 feet, but the others don't. So our zoning bylaw has set that up, as basically saying that's an acceptable development in an R-20, so.
So three out of four of those buildings do exceed 30 feet? So I'm, yeah.
Of the, okay. The one on the southwest corner does not, right?
Southeast. I think it might.
I believe it's the southeasterly does not exceed 30 feet.
Southeasterly.
Right. All of the C-type buildings exceed 30 feet, and the B building does not.
Correct.
So those four in the back, they all do, don't they?
No.
No, one doesn't? One out of four?
One complies.
One out of four.
So the building right here complies with the 30.
So I stand by that comment, and even if it was, even if they were all 30 feet, I'd still say that.
Randy, I would make one other comment.
Actually, sorry, we're just, we're looking at that on the fly. Two of those buildings in the back, could you put that one back up, Sarah? So which is the A, which is the B?
A is to the right, B is to the left.
So the A complies at 30 feet, is the B? B complies at 30 feet, these two Cs are, request waivers.
So maybe you can put the evergreens right around those, and push those up.
Yeah, all right.
And, and like I said, before you even pointed that out, I said I would have still said that, you know, even if they were all right on the nose at 30, just because I, just out of cooperation. Paul?
Randy, I would just like to generally point out, as you mentioned at the beginning, we had like 99 pages of comments that were sent in to the board. And I don't want you to think that from the comments, or the questions, or pushbacks that we make, that we're indicating that we're going to go one way or another in terms of a decision on each of these individual messages. We appreciate the fact that you're sending in comments, and that you're here, and that you're providing us with things to think about and question. And a lot of that has taken a lot of time, and in some cases, expenses. So don't think that it's something that we're not appreciative of, and we don't need, we do need. Thank you.
Okay, so what was the next date that we talked about? August 21, I think? So can we just confirm? Yes, sir.
Could I just add just a couple of quick things, if you don't mind?
Can you say your name again?
I certainly can, sorry. So I'm Charlie Adams from Penrose, and I sort of have the benefit of being able to see how these guys are doing it, and not being, you know, in all the weeds on time. And a couple of things I just wanted to...
And a couple of things I just wanted to say here at the end, some of the different things that we've heard and what these guys are doing. If you remember the beginning, Andrew sort of started off by saying, it's a lot of stuff that's trying to compete. And so these guys are working really hard to try to figure out how to do that. And, and I think, you know, what I really liked about tonight is I feel like we got a little bit of direction too on, on where the right places are to push-pull. You know, some people wanted more parking, some people wanted less parking. We want less parking. If we have less parking, we might be able to do a little bit more for the abutts. So those, I mean, if that's, if that's, that's really exciting for us, and we can go do that. And on that theme, I, you know, I want to be careful with the narrative here that like, we really are trying to address the abutts' concerns. And this is a very, very, very tight site. And the goal, the town of Chatham had the goal to maximize density. And so when you're trying to do those two things, there are limited places where we can push and pull, but we're really trying to do it. And as, you know, just for the record, to remind everybody, we had nine buildings. They've, we've lowered all of them. Every single building has been lowered. And some of it, although we brought down to the 30 feet, and the, and they're all in the back with the 17-foot requirement. So we're trying to meet that as best we can. So I know these guys are working really hard to do that and try to figure that out. And we'll be able to bring that back. Just a couple of small things I want to say, because I don't want any other rumors to get out here. Just to be really crystal clear on solar. Solar was a really important thing that we talked about with, with the town, with the Board of Selectmen and the committee. So what we have committed to is basically, and I don't know the exact words, but the, but the general sense is, not sense, what we are going to do is basically put solar wherever solar actually benefits, like actually can be produced. So that's going to be our goal, is every building will have that, except the buildings that don't have enough shade, and so we're just throwing away money. So that's the working principle of how we're going to address solar. And it's not fair to Paul because, you know, he wasn't part of all those conversations in other places we've just done solar-ready. And the last thing, just a small note that I wanted to, two other things I wanted to make. You know, the, we keep talking about this over 30 feet. One thing from the narrative that we all should remember is, and I got this from Paul, is that the top height of any, any top of window in any of the buildings is only 27 and 1/2. So, you know, we keep talking about these buildings being, being over. But, you know, that's, that's above the window head, that's above the, that's the roof line, that's all that other stuff. So I just think that's an important part of the narrative for us to be thinking about when we're talking about the height of these, of these buildings. And then the last, last thing I can say, and I'm glad, you know, just one other thing that we have to always be conscious of over here on this side is that there are other voices that have a lot of say in the success of this development outside of this room. And, and the biggest voices are the funders that have to provide all the state and resources. So the stuff that you see here that we're planning is stuff that we know that can be funded. And so when there are other things that are proposed, you know, in terms of different site plans, we know those things will not get funded. And we can get into that more later if you want in the next session. But like, those are some of the limiting factors. Like, we, if we, there are certain things we know we can bring to the state, and they will provide us the funding for it. There's other things, types of housing modules and things that we'll bring, and they won't fund it. So something that this group is always keeping in mind, that I don't think we do, you know, as good a job of communicating collectively to this group about the other voices that are out there that we're, we're also trying to balance. So we're trying to balance needs in this room, and we also are trying to balance, make this an actually feasible project that can get financing and actually can be built and serve the, serve the community. Those are just a couple of points that I wanted to make, so thank you for letting me take the time.
Yeah, and I'm glad we had somewhat of a meeting of the mind about being very concerned about the abutts. And we haven't made, we haven't said one thing about the height today. So, you know, we don't need to talk about that again, that I know of. I'm just speaking myself right now as to that. And then the other thing is that whatever you can do with regard to spaces and with, and the abutts, please come back with that and come back with an argument why you need less spaces and show us some evidence why, for that. Because I'm certainly wide open to that, you know. More parking lot is not appealing at all, and especially if the spaces aren't likely to be used. So, yeah, so we'd really like you to focus on the abutts for next time and all the things that we said. Does anyone else have anything? No? So is August 21, 21st? Yeah, and just so you know, we don't pick dates randomly. We have, now with this, and we understand that Meeting House is coming like within a week even, we're going to have meetings every single solitary week, every Thursday. And you have to remember, you know, we're, we're a volunteer group here of citizens. And, you know, we're doing the best we can. And I think we're the best panel that you could ever be in front of, probably in the, probably in America. I do.
In the world, in the world.
Don't sell yourself short.
Oh, sorry, could I, could I say one other small thing? Because again, I don't want rumors to get out of this room. There was one comment made by, by someone that came up here about talking about people being thrown out of these developments to make too much money. That is not true. Nobody, nobody gets thrown out.
No, we, we take it from.
And the rules are very specific. I mean, the details are, you can go up over a certain level of income. You no longer qualify as an affordable unit. So that means you have to have other units that come in to fill as affordable. But that person that's there can live there forever.
Okay, so you understand why we have to fit you in on the 21st, because that's not a regular meeting date. And so we're trying to give you your own date for the benefit of the public too. So, so I guess we should have a motion to, do we need a motion to go to August 21?
We need a motion to continue the hearing to August 21 at 2:00 PM.
Yes, sir.
I just have to clarify, so we're going to be preparing responses to the questions heard today. It's also my understanding, just want to confirm, that the peer reviewer is going to be doing the civil review and the traffic review between now and then, and they're going to be available on the 21st as well.
We hope, we hope. We can't, you know.
That's the goal.
Yeah, that is certainly the goal. We can only, we can't guarantee what somebody else is going to, if they're going to meet a deadline. And I just want to check, our attorney is online. Jay Talaman, do you have anything you want to add, except for what a great job we did tonight?
Put words right in my mouth. No, I think that, I think it was a good meeting. I think what we can do is the board discuss some possible changes, and the applicant's going to consider them. We should be filing them away for a discussion that we may have either the 21st or likely the session after that, after we get the peer review. Because there's a discussion at a certain point, when we get done with the technical stuff, as we've talked about before, where we say, this is what we'd like you to maybe think about changing. And then we get into the discussion, which we only touched on a little bit today, on whether that's feasible or infeasible under the standard under 40B. So all of that, like kind of horse-trading discussion is going to happen after we do some of the peer review. Because the peer review is going to result in probably some further modifications. Nothing, maybe nothing major, but it's going to result in something, for sure.
Thank you. So, Paul?
I will move to continue this application to another hearing on August 21, 2025.
And the voters on that will be Ginny, Steve, I believe, no, and Paul, myself, and Dave Veach. Is that correct, Sarah? We're trying to, we're making sure we follow the rules on the voting. So we can try, we're trying to make it so we, any of us could vote at the end of the day on the project. We understand that the Mullen Rule does apply here, and if we need to, you know, to do that, we will. Because we have a member that's absent tonight, and we've had a member that's already been absent in the past. So we're keeping track.
Yeah, and my understanding of the Mullen Rule is you can miss one meeting.
Correct.
Still, if you watch the video and do the thing. Can you repeat that list of who you just said who's currently?
Who's going to vote tonight, today?
Or you, or you mean just voting for?
We're just voting for the continuance. That's all, that's all. Yeah, okay, so let's have a vote on the continuance, Ginny?
So Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
Oh, yes, thank you, and you vote yes. Ginny?
Ginny votes yes.
Steve?
Steve votes yes.
Paul votes yes.
As do I. So that's unanimous, and then we need a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn. Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
Ed votes yes.
Paul votes yes.
I vote yes.
Steve votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
As do I. That's unanimous? Okay, good day, Chatham. What time is it?
5:33.
Thank you. Very good.